Could you go another? You can see a vision here. What kind of third page? Yes, thank you so much. Yes, yes, yes.
Good evening, the regularly scheduled city council meeting of San Dimas will come to order. Please rise, flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you please read the role?
Mayor Bedar.
Here.
Mayor Protan Vienna.
Here.
Councilmember Bertone.
Here.
Councilmember Ebner.
Here.
Councilmember Weber.
Here.
Let the record reflect all council members are in attendance.
Meeting will be conducted under the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order, such that no public is allowed in the council chambers. Public comments are allowed by emails and were received prior to the meeting and live calls during the meeting. Councilmembers were afforded the opportunity to appear in person or call in remotely. Councilmember Ebner is calling in remotely. Announcements proclaim May an Older American Recognition Month and recognize honorees.
Good evening, Mayor Bedar and members of the council. Around the nation, older adults make their mark every day as volunteers, employees, employers, parents, grandparents, mentors, and advocates. They offer their time, talents, and experience to benefit all of our communities. For fifty-seven years, Older Americans Month has been a special time to recognize these contributions. Led by the Administration for Community Living, each May, Older Americans Month provides resources that help older Americans stay healthy and independent and materials to help community support and celebrate their citizens. Every year, the City of San Dimas proclaims May as Older Americans Recognition Month. The Los Angeles County Commission for Older Adults requests that the City of San Dimas select a nominee who exemplifies the true spirit of volunteerism. Nominations for the San Dimas Older American Honoree are reviewed by the Senior Citizen Commission and the selected honoree is recommended to the City of San Dimas City Council for appointment. The San Dimas Older American Honoree will represent the City of San Dimas at future Los Angeles County Older American Recognition Day celebration. We ask the community for their input on who they thought made significant contributions to San Dimas this year. We received the most applications to date and as a result, the City of San Dimas has decided to highlight two very deserving nominees and two recipients of this year's Older American Month recognition. We would like to honor both Kathleen Ressler and Pamela Johnson for their outstanding contributions to the San Dimas community as they are both very deserving nominees for this recognition. Ladies, we thank you. This year, we have two recipients of the Older American Month recognition and the City of San Dimas is very proud to announce that those individuals are Alta Skinner and Margie Green. Thank you for all that you do for the City of San Dimas and congratulations to both of you. In closing, the senior center staff asked me to convey to all our senior residents that they miss seeing everyone and that they are looking forward to the day where everyone can be back at the San Dimas Senior Center again. Thank you and I will be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Any questions? I think I'll take this opportunity to read the proclamation. Some of the information that Tim gave is omitted from his notes. So as whereas for the past fifty-seven years, the month of May has been proclaimed throughout the country as Older American Recognition Month. And whereas the City of San Dimas recognizes the older adults are trailblazers, advocating for themselves, their peers, and their communities, paving the way for future generations. And whereas we appreciate the value and inclusion of support, helping older adults successfully contribute to and benefit from their communities. And whereas during the month of May, the City of San Dimas is celebrating the birthdays of those residents who this year have attained the age of ninety years old and older. And whereas Margie Green and Alta Skinner have active participates in participants in the senior program have been selected to represent the city of city at the Los Angeles County Older American Recognition Celebration in Los Angeles as well as other events and activities. And whereas the San Dimas Senior Citizens Club, the Bingo Committee, the Senior Citizen Commission are commended for their volunteer commitments and financial contributions for the betterment of San Dimas Senior Citizen Community Center and residents of San Dimas. Now therefore, I, Mayor Emmett Bedar, Mayor Protin, Ryan Vinghena, Councilmember Dennis Bertone, John Ebner, and Eric Weber do hereby proclaim May as Older American Month and urge every citizen to take this month to recognize older adults and people who serve and support as powerful and vital citizens who greatly contribute to this community. In witness thereof, I, Mayor Emmett Bedar, here hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of San Dimas to be affixed this twelfth day of May, 2020. Thank you. Any further announcements? We'll open up for oral communications?
Yeah, before we open up oral communications, let me describe the protocol for oral communications. Since the public is not allowed to physically attend the meetings, there are two opportunities for members of the public to provide comment to the city council for tonight's meeting. One of them was on the posted agenda, there was an opportunity for individuals to submit emails prior to the city council meeting that would be included into the record. And if I can call on the city clerk, I believe we did receive some emails and she can explain how those emails can be accessed.
The city clerk's office received thirteen email messages in support of the Project Room Key item Motel Six that I believe appears on the agenda. Those emails have been posted to the city's website under the city agenda page. They've been copied and provided to all of the council members and they will be entered into the record.
Debra, just for clarification, when you said in support of, you mean in the way I was reading them, they read opposed to the council passing the resolution, correct?
Yes, they those emails were in support of Project Room Key being allowed in the city.
Okay, thank you.
The other way that members of the community can participate in oral communications, there are two opportunities that they can call in and express their concerns or make comment on items that are on the agenda or not on the agenda. The first opportunity is in just a few minutes and this is an opportunity where they can call in and, as I said, make their comments. The city council, under the provisions of the Brown Act, is not allowed to respond to comments or debate the individuals as they're calling in, but those comments will be part of the city's record. The number that people can call in is on the screen that you if you're watching this on television or on our streaming, but the number is nine oh nine three nine four six two zero six. If you call in, there are several lines that will be called in and you'll be placed on hold waiting your turn to be patched into the council chambers. There are a few lines that we have, but if those lines get full and you call in, you get a busy signal, please call back and we'll put you in the queue. There are a couple of items that will be pulled from the agenda this evening and if I can ask the mayor to describe what those items are prior to the oral communications?
Item six A, resolution opposing the county use the county's use of Motel Six in San Dimas for Project Room Key program. This item is being pulled from the agenda because the city was made aware on Saturday that the county and the Motel Six have decided not to proceed with this location in San Dimas. We need to pull item five E from the consent calendar, denial of a claim due to an incorrect description on its agenda. We'll see it on a further future agenda.
So at this time, we'll open up the lines for oral communications. At this time, the speakers have three minutes. There will be timed, there will be a buzz that goes off after when there's one minute left of your three minutes and at the end of your three minutes, there will be another buzzer that goes off indicating that your time is up. So at this point, mayor, we can call on opening oral communications?
Do we have any calls? One?
Thank you for calling this San Dimas City Council meeting, your live.
Hi, good evening, city council members, mayor. My name is Florencio Briones. I'm the president of the Board of Trustees of the Almani Union High School District. I'd like to read a letter on behalf of our school district tonight. Dear city council members, the Almani Union High School District is the owner of property located at six seven eight West Arrow Highway in San Dimas, California, and is a proud member of the San Gabriel Valley community. To meet this unprecedented moment, the City of San Dimas must work together with other local governmental agencies in the San Gabriel Valley to tackle the many challenges relating to COVID-19. Project Room Key is a statewide initiative to provide housing to those experiencing homelessness during this pandemic. As a firm believer in the importance of this initiative to the San Gabriel Valley community, the district hopes that the City of San Dimas will support Project Room Key. Every single community in the San Gabriel Valley was affected by the homelessness crisis prior to COVID-19 and now more than ever, that crisis has been exacerbated by this unprecedented public health emergency. According to the 2019 homeless count, there were four thousand four hundred and seventy-eight people experiencing homelessness in the San Gabriel Valley. That number is expected to increase with the economic turbulence caused by the pandemic. This means we must collectively support all efforts to secure rooms to house our most vulnerable neighbors. Compassion and collaboration countywide are the linchpin to ameliorating the homelessness crisis facing our community. Additionally, the district cares deeply about continued efforts to flatten the curve of COVID-19 and to protect limited healthcare resources. Allowing people to remain unsheltered increases the risk that the virus will continue to spread throughout our community and that healthcare resources will be strained. Without leases of hotels in the San Gabriel Valley, people who are unsheltered will suffer and will all suffer. The COVID-19 crisis has made clear that our individual health is intrinsically linked to the health of our neighbors, sheltered or not. As a property owner in the City of San Dimas, the district urges the city to support Project Room Key and its efforts to bring additional sheltering capacity through hotels and motels to prevent further spread of COVID-19. Supporting Project Room Key in San Dimas is an important part of the San Gabriel Valley's overall efforts to respond to COVID-19 and it's the right thing to do for our community. Thank you for listening to me tonight. If you have any questions, you can reach me at florenciodobriones@emuhsd.org or by phone at six two six five three two seven two three zero. Thank you.
Mr. Kionis? Mr. Kionis? Will we make arrangements to get back in touch with him and have him send us a copy of that email? As of right now, we have no additional calls. We'll give it about a minute and see if anything happens.
Mayor, we do have two emails that came in on items that are not on the agenda that wanted to be read into public comment.
Okay.
First email is from Isabel Ebner. Hello, I understand there has been a lot going on with the city in the past few weeks with the installment of new council members and the current pandemic. However, I just wanted to inquire if there is any status update on the potential execution of an ENA with the developers for the Pioneer Square project. The next email is from a resident named David. He has a question as to when the public parks will be open to the public and when recreational programs such as the San Dimas Youth Softball Association will be allowed to restart practice and games on the city fields. If the league provides safe-to-play guidelines that will support social distancing, will the city be open to review those guidelines? Is there a timetable on when a decision will be made? Thanks for your time.
If you mind, I can provide a response. The city follows the county guidelines as far as the loosening of restrictions as far as opening up various businesses and recreation opportunities. As of now, the county has not established a timeline or the restrictions that might be in place to open up ball fields for the type of program that he's describing. So I'm sure that our recreation staff has his contact information and as soon as we find that information out, we'll let them know. But at this point, the county has not released those timelines as of yet.
Thank you. Appears to be no additional callers. I'll open it up for the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion unless a member of the city council requests separate discussion.
I have just a statement, Ken. Item number C, dealing with the housing element. I think that's so important that, not tonight, but at some time when things calm down, we should kind of go over that because like my question was, there was a lot of requests or demands on the city and I was wondering what happens if those aren't met and what are the consequences? So maybe sometime in the future, not necessarily, you know, while we were doing this, but we could have an explanation of that. And with that, I move approval.
Second.
Before you second it, I also received a call today concerning item C, the housing element, and about being a single-use project that's company appears to be just that we're taking on, appears to be, looks like that they're just handling single uses and we're using them for a global answer and looking for properties within San Dimas. So and also the question comes down, we're paying a hundred and eleven thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and is that is that all? Or is there additional funds going to be needed, you know, you know, quarter here, quarter there? What's going on? And if so, I would pull that we move that we pull item C and maintain it until Dennis can, we can have a meeting and discuss.
If I if I can call Henry and I think he probably can answer your questions if that's okay?
Okay.
Well then, Mr. Mayor, Dennis, if you're open to the amendment, then I would move we pass the consent calendar but pull item C for further discussion?
Second.
And also, Mr. Mayor, I want to be clear that item E was also pulled. So so this motion's only for A, B, D, F, and G.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, roll call?
Mayor Bedar.
Here.
Mayor Protan Vienna.
Aye.
Mayor, councilmember Bertone.
Aye.
Councilmember Ebner.
Aye.
Councilmember Weber.
Aye.
Let the vote reflect a five-zero vote present to approve the consent calendar.
Hello, Henry.
Good evening, mayor.
Do you mind discussing item five C, please?
Did you want a full staff presentation or just to go over to those questions?
Give us the issue and where it's at and then Dennis will have a couple of questions for you, I'm sure.
Sure. Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the city council. The item before the city council tonight is the request to approve the agreement with National Core to assist the city in updating the housing element for the upcoming sixth planning cycle. State law requires the city to update the housing element every eight years. The housing element is subject to review and certification by the State Department of Housing and Community Development. One of the significant items of the housing element update is illustrating how the city is going to meet its obligations with its regional housing needs assessment. The upcoming planning period, the City of San Dimas was assigned one thousand two hundred and forty-five units. That was recently approved by HCD. Earlier this year, staff sent out a request for proposal to several reputable planning firms that are well-versed in assisting cities and updating their housing element. The city received two proposals from National Core and Placeworks. They're very reputable planning firms that are do multiple things. They do general plan updates, specific plans, and housing element updates as well. After staff reviewed the proposals in terms of the submitted budget, the proposal approach and presentation, the housing element update experience, the experience of the proposed team members, the scope of work and schedule presented, staff is recommending the awarding of the contract to National Core. The proposed contract amount is for one hundred thousand, one hundred eleven thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And to assist in funding the housing element update, the city received a sixty thousand dollar SV two planning grant fund. The remaining funds have been budgeted within fiscal year, this fiscal year's Community Development Department budget for forty thousand dollars as well as twenty-five thousand dollars from the SB, from the Fund Thirty-four account. This provides a contingency amount of approximately thirteen thousand two hundred dollars to complete the project. This is all encompassing, so this would include the update, the site selection of all the housing element sites within the city, review of the policies and any hurdles that the city may have in its regulations that may be not in compliance with state law, as well as the environmental document that we require. So it is an amount for one hundred eleven thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars. In conclusion, staff recommends that the city council adopt the Resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-five authorizing the city manager or designee to execute an agreement with National Core for the amount of one hundred eleven thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars for the sixth planning cycle period. This concludes staff's presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions that the city council may have.
Dennis?
Yeah, I have a question. As far as the arena numbers go, what happens if we don't fulfill those? In the past, we just had to make a good attempt to do so.
Correct, and that's still the same. The the big caveat this year is the state is looking at these site selected, these sites very carefully. So they want to make sure that the sites that we select are able to accommodate the potential for these.
So if we select a site and no one comes to wants to know, but we're not going to be?
We're not going to be penalized. We just have to provide the opportunity, correct?
Thank you.
Thank you. One one comment that was made earlier today that I got a phone call from is it appeared that the company that we've chosen appears to specialize in single-type development areas. Do we know that they actually, this company performs this function of?
Yeah.
Citywide picking of locations?
So within the proposal, it gives actual examples and I actually worked in Chino Hills with one of the the vice president of this company on two specific plans. I believe our planning manager has worked with this company as well with a previous jurisdiction's housing element update as well. And then there's a number of housing element updates that this company has performed as well as general plan updates, specific plans. Not just, I'm assuming the single project is like a single development, like the Pioneer Square, for example, getting that entitled. They don't, they do some of those items, but that's not the only thing that they that they provide.
Thank you. Does anyone else have a question for Henry? John?
General good seat.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion?
A move.
Second.
All in favor, roll call?
Mayor Bedar.
Here.
Mayor Vienna.
Aye. And here.
Mayor Bertone. Mayor Bertone, councilmember Bertone.
We're on a roll.
Yes.
Councilmember Ebner.
Here, not here, aye.
Councilmember Weber.
Aye.
Let the vote reflect a five-zero count.
Thank you, thank you, Henry. Just a clarification for me, please, please forgive me. But in my twenty-seven seconds of learning how to be a mayor, one of the things that was brought up is that I should vote last. Is that some kind of a protocol or is that just some kind of a? I guess we'll ask the city attorney.
I don't think there's any rule about that, but that usually is.
Well, I know that all the years I was with Kurt, that's what he did, but, you know. It's. Okay, okay. Okay, all right, I have no problem one way or the other, but it just dawned on me that that somebody told me that, so I just want to get it clear.
Well, the city attorney is correct. I've never read anything where that that is something that is required or that there's a code that says you have to do that. But it's easier to go in alphabetical order to remember where I am in the minutes and how I recorded, so.
All right, for right now, let's do it that way, but I'll I'll talk with Jeff about that later. Thank you. Okay, other business? The twenty twenty-one budget update, budget process and revenue projections?
Yes, the this item tonight is just to kind of give you an update as far as where the the city is within our budget process. And the second part would be to provide you some background information as far as staff's analysis and revenue projections in light of the COVID-19 pandemic. But first off, to just to kind of give you some background, the city's budget needs to be adopted by July first. to be adopted by July 1st, and we start our process typically in January of every year, which we did this year. We did hold a February budget study session with the council to talk to them about the, the approach to the budget this year, and that was just prior to the, the pandemic taking effect and all of the stay-at-home orders and the impacts that those had on the community and the economy. So, staff had, each department is responsible for putting together the budgets for their programs and, and projects for, within their department. And then we bring all those budgets together and, and put those together as an overall budget. When the pandemic appeared that it was going to have some longevity and would have some impact on our budget process, we kind of changed gears a little bit and asked departments to, in light of the loss in revenue, to take a different look at how we might be approaching the budget. And so, we kind of changed gears a little bit, which puts us, which put us a little bit behind our adopted schedule. So, we modified the schedule, and where we are today is that we've already gone through at a staff level about three iterations of, of a budget as far as making some adjustments and, and corrections. And so, we have a draft budget that includes all of the items that each department had submitted in their preliminary budget for consideration. And then also anticipating that we would be having a significant loss of revenue, we asked each department to put together what we're calling an emergency budget. And this would be one where they took a look at if we really needed to make some significant deferrals of some of our projects and reductions in some of our expenditures, what that might look like. Then the next step would be that we would like to have our first meeting with the council to review the preliminary budget, and we are suggesting a special City Council meeting next week, and in a couple of minutes, we'll get to the council's desire to schedule that. And at that time, the council has expressed that they would like each department to go through all of their projects and their programs and any personnel adjustments that they would like to consider for the budget, and then we can get some direction from the City Council, given that information. Then we would propose that we would have a second meeting with the City Council, a budget, budget study session prior to your May 26th meeting, where we would have, bring back to you some suggested changes based upon your direction, and then possibly have another study session the week of June 1st, if we need to, if we still have some refining of, of what we need to do with the budget. And then, we would have a draft budget before you, your first meeting in June, which would allow, would allow for us to adopt a final budget the second meeting in June. So, there is, there is plenty of time between now and, and the final budget adoption for a lot of give and take and a lot of decisions that need to be made. And so, that's the kind of, the revised outline that we are proposing to the City Council. Are there any questions regarding the budget outline and process before I get into the revenue projections? In, in looking for a possible meeting date for next week, for a special study session, if, you could look at your calendars and if anybody has any conflicts that they see on any night next week, we are thinking that maybe the preferred night might be Wednesday of next week. Does anyone have a conflict with that?
That would be on the...
20th?
That would be on the 20th, yes.
I'm okay.
I have no conflict.
Does anyone have a, a time conflict or a preference as far as what time we would start? Excuse me.
Well, I have a Zoom meeting on that day, so like 1:00 to 3:30.
Okay. But as far as the evening time, is there...
6:00 would be fine for me.
Is 6 o'clock?
I can start as early as 6:00.
Okay, so maybe 6:00?
That works for me. I'm okay.
Okay. Now, the format would be that since the public, it is an open public meeting, but the public will not be allowed to participate in person. The intention would be that we would hold the study session in the chambers so that we could televise it and we can allow for call-in comments, and that we can do PowerPoint presentations, so the public can actually visually see what's being discussed.
I think that'd be preferred.
Okay. Good. So, just before we present this budget to you next week, we wanted to put some things in context as far as the financial impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic, and so we put together just a really brief PowerPoint presentation. So, just as, as far as a timeframe, the first slide indicates, you know, that the, believe it or not, this has been, the pandemic has been with us for just going on two months now. The first state of emergency was declared by the governor on March 12th, and the stay-at-home orders were put into place March 19th. So, at, that was the point when many of our businesses were closed and, and people were, were staying at home and limited to their shopping and their ability to, to move about. As most of you are aware, that just last week, the state and LA County started to open up non-emergency businesses and, and locations, and there are discussions that those non-emergency types of businesses and, and locations would be expanded in the upcoming weeks and months. Next slide. And again, this is just kind of a recap. We're all aware of that the businesses were closed, city facilities were closed, as well as trails and parks, including golf courses. Many businesses had their employees either teleworking or furloughed or laid off because of business closures, and the social distancing and face masking requirements were put into place and continue to be in place. So, there are a number of revenue sources that the city has that are impacted by the pandemic and the closures. I think a lot of people, you know, assume some of them upfront, such as sales tax, but each one of these categories are revenue sources that have been impacted. Sales tax, our transit occupancy tax, which is the, the bedroom tax for our hotels, franchise taxes, in the fact that there are some utilities that, excuse me, there are businesses that are closed, that their service, for example, solid waste services have been suspended. So, the utility companies are not collecting the fees for those services, and we have a, a franchise tax on all of our utilities, so those revenues will be decreased. Our business license tax, we, we renew our business license on a quarterly basis, and so there, the second quarter of this calendar year, we made the decision not to mail out our renewals for those businesses, because so many businesses are closed, we wanted to hold off on that. And so, and we don't know when businesses start to reopen, how many businesses may not be able to reopen or may be delayed in their reopening, so we do know that we're going to have some impact on our business license tax. When this all stay-at-home order went into effect, we suspended our overnight parking enforcement, so all of our parking permit revenue and citation revenue has been suspended. Our building rentals, since we are no longer able to during this time period rent out the community building and the senior center and our other facilities, that revenue is suspended. Building permit activity, though we've had some permit activity, there's been a significant decline in the number of permits that have been pulled, as well as planning fees. We do have some projects that have been in the planning hopper for some time, where we're continuing to do plan checks, but there are very few new planning projects that have been submitted during this time period. The golf course, their operations have been suspended, and so we are losing not only the lease rent from the golf course, but also their annual revenue that they collect in aggregate. If there's excess revenue that goes above and beyond the expenses, that goes to pay down a loan that the city made to the golf course many years ago, so that loan repayment will probably be suspended this year. Recreation charges and fees with the suspension of our recreation programs, not only for the second quarter, but most likely a, a number of programs during the summer. The spring and summer quarters happen to be our two largest quarters for recreation programs, so we will be losing the, the revenue from those two quarters. Interest earnings, because of the impact on the economy and the market, stock market, our interest earnings are going to be under projected from what we had originally projected in the budget. And then again, the lease payments for some of our leased operations, for example, the restaurant at the Walker House, the Sycamore Canyon Equestrian Center, and also the golf course are impacted because those businesses have been shut down during this pandemic. So, the next slide, next two slides kind of give you, oh no, I'm sorry, there's, then in addition to the general fund, the revenue sources that I just described previously are general fund revenues. We do have some of our special funds where those revenue sources are tied to sales tax or gas tax, which will also be impacted. We don't know yet because those formulas are calculated by either the state or the county, but some of those sources include gas tax, our Proposition A and C, which are para-transit and road repair dollars, as, as well as Measure R and Measure M, which are road repair dollars, which are based upon sales tax. And then the Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Act is a combination of sales tax and DMV fees will also be impacted, but we're not quite sure the exact amount. And as I mentioned before, the Walker House rent and the golf course lease. So, the next slide is just a graph that, that shows you the, in a graph form, some of our major sales tax or, or tax bases, and looking back over the last five years, and then projecting what we anticipate the decrease will be this current fiscal year, and also looking forward to 2021. So, it's kind of hard to tell on a graph, there's a, there's a chart that's a couple slides from now that'll actually give you dollar amounts, but you can see that, you know, sales tax being the yellow and TOT being the blue, franchise tax being the green and business license tax being the red, that our revised estimates in 1920, and then also projecting out to 2021, you can see there's a significant decline in those projections for this year and next year. Then on the next slide, these are the fees that are impacted, so the white being the building fees. It's kind of hard to see, but the green being the planning fees, parking permit citations are the brownish color, recreation class fees, building permit fees and golf course repayment loans. So, you, again, you can see the decline in the graphs for our fees over the next couple months and next year. So, the next chart, though, really is the, the key as far as the actual numbers. And so, we've, the sources that we've used in projecting our revenue decline for this current fiscal year and next year are a combination of, we have some consultants that we use year after year who help us with our sales tax and our property tax projections. We also, the League of California Cities, a couple of weeks ago, did a survey of, of cities across the state and asked for our estimated loss of revenues over the next couple of years, and they use some of their, their economists that they use to assist in, in some of the projections. Then we actually, we know what our year-to-date revenues are for many of these categories, and we know that in some of these categories, we're not going to receive any additional revenue for the remainder of this year. So, we're pretty confident in most of the numbers that we've anticipated for the revised current fiscal year, which are these columns here. So, this is the anticipated budget that we budgeted for our revenues, this is what we're estimating the revised amount will be, and this is the loss for this current fiscal year and the percentage. So, using sales tax as an example, we estimated or budgeted 6.8 million. We think it's going to be closer to 6.1, about a $700,000 loss this current year. And then you can see in each of the categories, you know, hotel, about a $640,000 loss, franchise 191, business license 80, building permits 73, parking permits 141,000, rentals 34,000, planning fees 15,000, recreation fees 400,000, golf course repayment 70,000. So, we anticipate that we are going to be about 2.3 million dollars below what we budgeted for this current fiscal year. And then projecting out next year, and again, these are more projections because we don't know when the economic recovery will really take place and really kick in. So, again, we used the, relied on our consultants and economists and just used some projections, but again, this is going to be, these will be fluid numbers depending on whether the, the economic recovery starts to kick in more over the next couple of months, or if it really doesn't kick in till the end of summer or even into the fall, these numbers will need to be adjusted. But based upon our estimates, it could be in the neighborhood of about 2.5 million dollars next year as far as lost revenue over what we had anticipated historically. So, as you can see, those are pretty significant numbers when we talk about a general fund budget of, you know, just under 20 million dollars, and we're looking at, you know, 2.3 or 2.5 million dollars in lost revenue just from the impacts from the COVID-19. So, we give you that information as just some background to, to put things in perspective when we start to bring the budget to you next year or, or next week, so that you can understand that any loss of these revenues will probably have to be made up in reductions in projects or programs or services, or in use of general fund reserves to balance the budget if we want to try and maintain the same level of services and projects and programs that we anticipate for next year. So, hate to be the, the bearer of, of this bad news, but this is reality, and so I would be happy to answer any specific questions you have or how we came up with some of these numbers.
Ken, what I would ask, though, is that the staff supply us with copies of these numbers and stuff?
Yeah, there's actually, we, we gave you a copy of the whole PowerPoint presentation, and I can also email it to you.
I'm sorry, it's on my desk.
Yeah. I can also email it to you, and it will also be posted as part of our agenda packet, so people in the public can take a look at it if they'd like.
Super, that'd be, that, that would be good. When, when, is there any, have you heard any, any noise, you know, from the state or from the federal government that, you know, they keep talking about passing these stimulus plans, and they keep talking about money possibly going to the state, to local agencies? Are we, we're capturing whatever dollars we're losing, and is there any possibility that the, the feds are going to come in, other than give the state something, but maybe help us out because of local losses?
Yeah, actually, the, you know, the, the Federal Cares Act, there's been three iterations of that that have been adopted, and the last two versions of it ago, there was a request from local governments that there be money that was earmarked, that would be available to local governments to be able to backfill some of these lost revenues because of the crisis. What was adopted was backfilling money to local governments, but only those that had populations of over 500,000, $500,000 in population. So, smaller cities were not included in that. The iteration of the Cares Act that was adopted two weeks ago, there was a big push by, I know, League of California Cities, and, and we wrote a letter to the federal government asking that small cities be included in that funding, and we were not. There is a, a Cares Act bill that was just introduced yesterday, and I just got some information from Congresswoman Napolitano's aide this afternoon, that as of now, the assembly version does include funding for local governments of population less than 500,000 that would be available for backfilling some lost revenue as well as paying for expenses due to the, the pandemic. So, I am drafting or actually redrafting the same letter that we sent them two weeks ago in support of the Congress including that kind of backfill for local governments. What we're also putting pressure on the state through the League of California Cities, because the state is getting money for their lost revenue, and they have the ability to trickle that down to local governments, but at this point, the state has chosen not to. So, we're also putting pressure through the league on the state to try and get some of that money for our economic recovery.
Thank you. Why, doesn't that surprise me?
Which one?
Either, any of it.
Ken, this is on, can you email me a copy of that?
Oh, yes. Yeah, I think Deborah might have, or if not, we'll make sure we email you the packet of all the documents that are presented at the dais today.
I've got a lot of stuff, but I don't know if I got that. But anyway, but email would be good.
Okay. No problem.
You know, which brings up another subject. The fact is that when we broadcast, like we're broadcasting right now, these numbers and all this information can't be read by anybody out there that's watching it on television. I mean, the numbers are, it's so blurry and, and things like that. I mean, I've tried to go back and watch it, and I can't make heads or tails of it, so we need to really talk about how we're going to improve this system, and I realize... And I realize money's our problem right now, but the reality is the people out there will be ringing the phone off the hook tomorrow asking about this because there are people, more and more people watching now because of, they got nothing else to watch on television. So, you know, the reality is we've got to come up with a better system because I'll guarantee you that cannot be read.
Yeah, the, the problem really is not at our end. It's at the, the, all channels on Frontier and Spectrum are high definition except our channel and they will not provide us a high definition channel. So there's no equipment that we can enhance our signal because it's going out on, on standard definition. Now, if you're, if you're watching it on streaming, it's a little clearer of a picture and we're actually looking at some new equipment that would allow us when we play out on streaming that'll be even clearer. But as long as we're still on standard definition, we're still going to have some degradation of quality, unfortunately.
Thank you. Okay, any other, any further questions of Ken?
Yeah, Ken, I have a question. You said Sycamore Canyon Equestrian Center is closed. I was up there the other day and the horses are still alive.
No, they're not closed, but they're, they, they've had some of their number of boarders has declined. And so, and they have asked for some deferral of their rents, just like the Luca Bella and the golf course asked for some deferral of their rents until we understand how the, the length of this. Though they're not closed, but I, I think they have lost a number of boarders because people have taken their horses elsewhere that's more economical.
Are they deferring the boarding charge to the citizens?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you.
You know, and that just brings up another question. When we talk about our parking, suspending our parking and that on a nightly basis from two to five, okay, most of our employees for that service are part-time employees. Are we, did we lay them off or do we furlough them or what do we do? How, what are we doing with that?
Yeah, they're part-time hourly employees, so they are not working, so they're not getting paid those hourly wages. And, and I should point out that, you know, I, we talk about some of the loss in revenue of some of these sources. Obviously there's a loss or there's expenses that are not incurred because of not providing, for example, the recreation programs and classes. So if we're not providing those programs, they're, the expense for some of the staffing and the supplies are not being incurred. So there is an offset in some expenditure reduction by not providing some of these services. And parking is a good example. So we have four parking officers that are not being paid while they're not doing parking enforcement.
Okay, and then I guess one other question. With the, with the counties today saying that, or at least indicating that they were going to continue the stay-at-home order for the next 90 days, that would probably play big problems with our, with our recreation detail or maybe, you know?
Yeah, there was a comment made and I was going to address that a little bit later, but I'll address it now. There was a comment made during the Board of Supervisors meeting today in a discussion where the, apparently the director of County Health made a comment that she could see a scenario where the stay-at-home orders would be through August. The county has submitted a, a press release later this afternoon to clarify that, that that comment was made out of context. However, they didn't refute that comment, but they just said that it would be a slow rollout over the next several months. So we've anticipated in some of our revenue projections that we would probably have impacts of revenue loss at least through the summer for some of these categories. And again, even longer because there is discussions that, you know, things like, you know, large gatherings would not be allowed through the end of the, or until 2021. And so there might be some, you know, example, transit occupancy tax may continue to lag if there's people who aren't traveling, going on vacation or business conventions or the Fairplex not operating any activities. We get a lot of our hotel guests from Fairplex activities and schools, if, if there's no graduations, we get a lot of hotel traffic from people who, who come to graduations for the surrounding universities. So the longer those types of activities are suspended, our TOT would be directly impacted by those.
Super, thank you. Any, any other questions? John?
Yes, regarding the part-time employees, enforcement officers and people like that who are our employees. Now, Ken, first of all, they're basically furloughed at this point, right? They're not let go.
Correct, correct. They're still on payroll and for those that do receive benefits, they would still receive benefits, but they're also eligible for unemployment and we understand that the majority of those part-time employees have applied for unemployment and with some of the enhanced unemployment benefits, some of them are making either their full compensation or in some cases, maybe even making a little bit more than what they were making on their hourly wage.
And, and that's what I'm interested in. So, and that's, that's good that they're able to file for unemployment. I was wondering if could, if you could find out, out all those employees who are part-time and I, I'm not sure if we want to include some of our recreation staff or not because I don't know if they have really been hired yet, but, but whoever, whoever's part-time and would be getting some paycheck, a paycheck of some kind or another, to see, make sure that they're either getting unemployment and if they're not, no, like why not? Maybe they need some help in applying, if there are cases where they're not eligible. I don't know the rules for that, but the, the goal would be to make sure that, not with some creative way of making sure that people are being able to not go without a paycheck at all, a paycheck or unemployment. But I'd be interested in that for the budget, budget.
Okay, we'll, we'll try and get some more information to present back to you next week.
Okay, the idea is that, you know, we've got to follow the staff to where we could really, you know, make, make sure we, we show that we care about each and every one of them individually and, and what their circumstances are. That's the whole idea and it, it's kind of neat because we're, we're a small city, we can do it.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
If there's nothing further, then we will prepare then for a budget study session for next Wednesday, the 20th at six o'clock.
Thank you. Okay, Civic Center Park Sidewalk Improvement Project update?
Yeah, Sherry Garwick is going to give that presentation. She'll be here in just a minute.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. Staff is nearing completion of design for the sidewalk and lighting at the Civic Center Park. And as there have been some changes due in part to material costs and in part to providing additional power for future events within the park, staff would like to get council's guidance on moving forward with the project and propose some alternatives. So for those not familiar with the, the area, Civic Center Park is located north of City Hall, which is north of Benita Avenue and east of San Dimas Avenue. It is one of the most used parks in the city, hosting weekly events in the summer such as music and movies in the park and many annual events such as the city's birthday barbecue and the family festival. Over the years, the city has received requests for sidewalk around Civic Center Park and in 2019, City Council allocated funding for the proposed sidewalk and lighting improvements. The original project called for sidewalk and lighting on the, there we go, the west side of the park and on the north side of the park. And included in the project was, as I said, street lighting in the park as well as trees planted in the tree wells provided by the, the sidewalk. Also in the original proposal was, uh, streetlights on Iglesia south of First Street and streetlights on Second Street east of the library entrance up here. So the funding allocated was 221,000 in lighting funds and then 86,000 in concrete improvements for a total of $307,000. So while finalizing the electrical design, there were some costs increased due to a number of different factors. The material costs of the poles themselves were actually higher than the original estimate. And the number of streetlight poles, it actually increased within the park to provide the, the minimum lighting standard per city standards. Also, um, there's an electrical pedestal in this area here that was dilapidated and it has to be replaced in part because of dilapidation, but also in talking with Parks and Recreation during the design, they requested additional outlets where power up in the north side of the park and on the east side of the park to provide for future events. We also provided additional power at the, at the stage in this area. So in order to stay within budget, what we would suggest is, is limiting the scope of the, of the project to actually within the constraints of the park. So to stay in budget, what we would recommend is not replacing these streetlights. There are existing streetlights here and not replacing them and not replacing the streetlights on Second Street east of the library. So, so that on Iglesia south of First Street, remove the exist, the replacement streetlights and then on Second Street east of the library, do not replace those lights at this time. Those lights will be replaced in a future decorative streetlight project that we, we have an annual program. So if that is, is, that is our proposed alternate one. And you can see there's sidewalk on the west side, sidewalk on the north side, and there is actually existing sidewalk here that will not be touched. It will remain in place. So the proposed budget for that will be within the adopted budget for this fiscal year. Okay? However, while this project was being planned, there was another project going on for the replacement of, of fitness equipment within Civic Center Park. And actually I'll show you that's where the old fitness equipment was. That has since been removed and new fitness equipment has been purchased. That fitness equipment is due to be installed in the same area. And it's actually going to be a larger pad and I'll show you some of the equipment. Here's a rendering of the proposed equipment. You can see the equipment, but underneath it is a concrete pad. And you, and you can see these, uh, that there's a canopy over the top. Those are all foundations that need to be installed as well in order to install the fitness equipment. There's some renderings of the, the fitness equipment. But since the fitness equipment's going in, one of the requirements will be that there needs to be ADA parking adjacent to where the fitness equipment's going in. This is a, a example of an ADA parking stall that's in the downtown. One of the differences will be the sidewalk is actually going to be adjacent to the curb in the, in this parking stall that will be in the down, in, at Civic Center Park or would be. So this would be what, to, since these are concrete improvements for the fitness equipment pad and the foundations as well as the park ADA parking stall, staff is recommending that we include this project with the proposed sidewalk project. So if we did that, the, we'd have sidewalk on the west side and lighting as well as trees and then sidewalk and trees and lighting on the north side, you'd have the concrete pad for the fitness equipment and the ADA parking stall. The total cost on that project would be 342,000. So you'll notice the original project was entitled at 307,000. This is 342,000 and I'm asking for, for 75,000. Numbers, I just wanted to explain the numbers to you. So that some, it has to do with the funding source. So the electrical improvements are being funded through restricted funds, which is our Fund VII. It's restricted to lighting improvements only. Okay, lighting and electrical improvements. So any of the?
That includes the sidewalk.
Okay, so the sidewalk's actually being funded through, through, uh, Fund 22. So, so even in the original allocation, there was a percentage 221,000 from lighting funds and then 86,000 from Fund 22 for the concrete improvements. Okay? So, so in here, what, what'll end up happening is we need $75,000 more for the concrete improvements. Sorry. Okay?
And that money's already been allocated except for the 75,000?
Yes, yes. Okay? So that's, that's the funding, why the, why the numbers look a little bit strange. Okay? But one of the things we'd like you to consider is since we're doing all these improvements in the park, which on the west side, the north side and over here is, it might be a good time to actually do the fun, the improvements on the east side as well. If we install the sidewalk on the east side, there'll actually be a loop for, for people who want to do the fitness equipment and, and do an actual circuit for aerobics or, or whatever, they could, it would be more attractive for seniors who want to do the fitness equipment and take a walk afterwards. So we believe that this is a good time actually to do, would be a good time to add the sidewalk on the east side, even though economically it's not a great time, but we believe that there would be some, uh, economy of scale because we're actually already doing the work, the equipment needed is already there. But if we do the, the sidewalk on this east side, we also need lighting. Okay, so it'll drive up the lighting costs somewhat. So if, if we added this east side, it'd add $50,000 to the actual, what, what we were already requesting, which would be for a total of, of 125,000. Okay, so but if we, for that, we would get sidewalk on, all around the, the perimeter of the park and lighting as well. So that would be the ultimate cost would be approximately 432,000. Does include some contingency as we always do with, with construction projects in case you encounter something that you, you didn't foresee. But here's the, the three alternatives that we would suggest is the first alternative is sidewalk on the west and north as well as the lighting improvements. That's within budget. For alternative two, that's includes sidewalk on the west and the north and only the, the pad and the ADA stall. What we, what we think is, you may want to consider is having the sidewalk all around the perimeter of the park and we believe that the community would probably get the best use out of that, out of that third option. So staff is requesting council guidance on what option you prefer. As staff would like to move forward with ordering the electrical equipment, there's a long lead time on some of the equipment and we would like to have the equipment on order while bidding the electrical and concrete work. So for instance, if you choose to go with the first option, there's only eight streetlights required. Okay? If you choose to go with the full sidewalk all around the park, there's 12 streetlights that are required. So we would order those ahead of time. In terms of timing of the project, depending on council approval, staff anticipates bidding the electrical equipment in the next couple of weeks. The bids for construction of the electrical and concrete work would follow with work anticipated to begin in July and finish in August. And this is a picture of the streetlight that we're proposing to put inside the park. Thus concludes my presentation. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
You know, I have a question for the city manager. Personally, I like option number three, but can we afford it? I mean, we're adding, it's a hundred thousand dollars more than option two. Can we, can we afford to do this at this time?
The, there's, as Sherry mentioned, there's two sources of funding for this. The electrical part of it, the streetlights and the electrical come from our lighting district, which has a pretty healthy reserve and can only be used for lighting projects. So we can't absorb the, a So we can't absorb the electrical enhancements out of the lighting fund. The, the balance of the project, the concrete work, was budgeted, as Sherry mentioned, at a certain funding level. Any additional funds would either have to come from reserves, or there is money in one of our park development funds, which could fund either option two or three, but that would draw down all the balance in that park fund, which would make that, that fund unavailable for any park projects for next year. So there is money in that park fund to absorb either option two or three, but it would be drawing down park development funds for future park projects.
It makes a lot of sense to do option number two, because as you said, if you put in that pad later, it may destroy the sidewalk and everything. So that makes a lot of sense. I, I, I don't know about three. I mean, I like it, but I mean, do we want to draw down our complete park fund for that?
I have a couple of questions for Sherry when the time is right.
Sure.
Did you get a good enough answer?
Yeah, that's fine.
John?
Yeah, so Sherry, you mentioned minimum light stand, lighting standards. What is, is that the same as regular streetlights, or are there different standards for the park?
So what we propose is to put the regular sidewalk, streetlight standards, which is point-two-foot candles. So it's, it's what you would see on a normal, on a normal street.
Got it. Okay. Come on. Now, you were saying that to, to save money, you were going to delete some streetlights south of Second Street on Iglesia. Are those ones that you would have been, been putting on the west side of the street? Or which ones are those that you're deleting?
So, so we're on Iglesia, south of First Street.
Oh, no, on First Street.
Right. Yeah. There is none within the park. The streetlights would, would be on the, actually on the east side of the street along the park. So we're-
Okay. Got, got it. Now, so would the around the, around the park? That, I have a question of, on Second Street, are we doing streetlights on both sides of the street?
No. The, the plan was always to put streetlights on the perimeter of the park.
Okay. So eventually, if we were chosen to do a nostalgic streetlight on Second Street, on in that block between Iglesia and Walnut, would it be typical that we would have an alternate side with the streetlights as opposed to having them all on one side?
Typically, that is correct.
If we do it this way, with putting them all on one side, I mean, how does that affect the lighting and the lighting standards you're talking about on the north side of the street?
So there are existing streetlights on the north side. What we did on the photometrics, we looked at the, the lighting on the park itself, just on the park sidewalk, and did not address what's on the north side. Typically, what would happen is we would replace the streetlights on the, on the north side when we did a nostalgic, uh, streetlight project.
Right. Right. Yep. Okay. My other, only other question really, besides we, when we discuss everything, is the, the actual intersection of, of Second and Iglesia, you have the sidewalk up against the street there. Now, why is it there and why don't we continue a parkway around that? Or, and I know we obviously, the ADA ramp and stuff like that, but why, we have most streets when it comes to a corner, like on the opposite of the street, have the parkway, you know, all the way up to the corner almost until it gets to the, you know, for the ADA ramp?
Well, the ADA would require the, the concrete adjacent to the, the curb at, at the corner location. We dived it in to, there's a planter up there on the north, on the northwest corner there that we were trying to, to avoid damaging or minimize our impact on.
And I, I know what you're talking about there. I can see it on the map, but it seems like you could go a lot closer, like from where the walkway to the stage is, and before you had to veer in to the, to the street there.
Okay. I, we can, we can look at that.
Thanks a lot.
Sure.
Just quickly, my understanding is that the exercise equipment has already been purchased and it's sitting, waiting for this project to be, the pad to be poured in.
Yes.
Completely correct.
It has been purchased.
So I have a, a difficulty on one hand reconciling this project, knowing its history. And I think there's been a, a long time, this project's been on the books, and I think there's, uh, community members that have been very passionate about this issue and this park and this project. I think if, I think if council's, you know, going to consider this, I mean, on one hand, I think we just pour the pad for the concrete and put the equipment in that we've already purchased and, you know, table the rest of it. But on the other hand, I think if we're going to do it, we should just do it right, and I'd be inclined, I think, to be favorable of option three. I think, you know, ultimately, the utility of the park and the place that we're at in time, with the pandemic and everything else, people are in fact using the parks. I think it's going to be more important in the future. People may have different expectations of the parks moving forward as we're moving through recovery. So I can't even believe I'm going to say it, but I, I would, I would- I'd make a motion to, to move forward with alter, al, alternative number three and appropriate the funding.
Uh, discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. So remind me, Sherry, the difference in the budget, not counting the, the restricted funds, what's the difference between option one and alter, alternative one, alternative three?
I'll give you a comparison. I don't, I don't know if you can see the, the alternates here. Alternate one is a total of two hundred and seventy-six thousand is, is what our estimate is. Option, option three is four hundred and thirty-two thousand. So, al, alternate one is within budget by thirty thousand or so. Alternate three would, would require that we appropriate about a hundred and twenty-five thousand, and of that hundred and twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand would come from the restricted lighting funds and about ninety-five thousand from a park fund.
And what is that going to do to the parks fund?
It would pretty much draw- It would pretty much draw that park fund down to zero or up close to that, I believe.
No, I, I'm typically in favor of, you know me, I, I'm typically in favor of anything we can do for recreation and, and doing that. Right now, this is a one-off, and we're not looking at it in context of the entire budget, but a hundred thousand dollars approximately that we're taking out of mon, money that could be used for other things. When we're talking about a budget shortfall of two and a half million or whatever Ken was saying earlier, this is almost five or percent or so of that amount of money that we're going to be short. So although we budgeted it for this year, I think this pandemic hit us, you know, blindsided us, we need to save that money. So I'd be willing to go with alternative one, but I cannot go for adding the other things on. I understand economy of scale and all of that, but we could, we could say the same thing, well, why don't we do the streetlights on the north side of Second and the, and the west side of Iglesia, to keep on going to, you know, on the north side of the library and the east of Park Lot. We could say all of that and say each one of those is an economy of scale or adding, adding just a little bit for, for, you know, bigger benefits, bigger bang for the buck. But we can go on and on and say that and make it a, you know, half a million dollar budget. So I, I, I think, we just need to be conservative, and I don't think we should go with alternative three.
Sherry, the, when you said, or Ken, when you said ninety-five thousand out of the park fund would nearly liquidate that entire account?
Correct.
So, but it's a drop in the bucket in terms of the reserves. I would almost, I wouldn't mind reserve appropriation or even splitting a draw out of the reserves, half of the ninety, and then half out of the park fund. I think what's important is, is that I hear everything John's saying, but I think that the communities, if you go to the parks, and right now, life is different, and there is no end in sight at this point, I think it's important that we have options for people. And I think this project probably would be done, and we would still be struggling to get back to normal. And while I, while I wonder what services people benefit from, from the city, the one thing that they're benefiting from right now more than anything else is our parks. And, and I think it's important that this specific equipment that I believe was purchased was ADA compliant.
Yes.
And it services seniors, isn't available to our seniors. I think that is very important. And I think it's also right here in the downtown area and easily accessible to those folks. So for those reasons, I still support the motion as it's-
You know, the thing about this park, it is used by the entire city. It's, it's not specifically like the Via Verdi Park is mainly used by Via Verdi people and same with other parks, but this park is equally, I think, used by the entire city. So it doesn't bother me to, to take money from another place and put it here.
Well, don't get me wrong, I'm in favor of the exercise equipment and everything else. I'm looking at the picture of it though, and will this exercise equipment be available during the restrictions we have in playgrounds, ball fields, and everything else that are roped off and can't be used?
Well, I was going to say, did, I know the current orders, all playground equipment, including, you know, this type of equipment would be, you know, restricted until those orders are lifted.
I just don't think we can foresee this future, and, you know, I guess I'll just have to take the typically conservative position and say that we need to wait and, and see before we invest the money. I'm not, not against the proposal, but it's just the money that we literally don't have right now, that, I mean, we have in our reserves, obviously, but I'd like to see that put up against the other projects that we would like to draw reserves from, because that's what we'll probably have to do. But anyway, so that, that's my argument, that, again, doing alternative three, that's what I'm assuming that that-
Sherry, how much are the trees in this project?
I believe we've allocated fifteen thousand for, for irrigation trees and, and some DG.
I'm good with that.
And if this project was, was to go forward, Parks and Rec would get the, the electrical that they want, that feel would be necessary to keep either?
Yes.
If you look at, at alternative one, that, that scraps the fitness pad, right?
Yes.
Well, and I, we already have purchased the equipment.
Right.
So it's just sitting in, in mothballs somewhere right now. So I, I, I have some real personal problems with the fact that, one is, I think everybody up here knows that I, I've been very adamant about this sidewalk issue because a lot of folks, I mean, not just people that we, you know, who come normally, but a lot of people have reached out and said, we need to do it. And, and quite honestly, I am concerned about the fact, we don't know what the future predicts, you know, whatever, but we wouldn't be using parks money, and we wouldn't be using sidewalk money for, to, for any of those reasons, to, to the problems that we would eventually come by. So those funds are restricted, so we need, you know, would do it.
So it's kind of not restricted, the parks fund is not restricted. Those are, as you recall, those are the funds you put in there usually every fall in order, I think it's Fund Twenty you're talking about, right, Sherry?
Twenty-two?
Twenty-two.
Other fund? I think it's Fund Twenty. And so we can put money in and take money out, and I've been a proponent, of course, every single year, of putting as much as possible in there, and when others have not wanted to put anything in there, I, I've argued to put money away in that fund for sure, definitely. However, but, but, so that money is not restricted, and that's the ninety-five thousand dollars we're talking about. Anyway, I, I just wanted to make sure we were clear on that.
Yeah, I agree, John. Thank you. But the, the electrical cost will be coming out of-
Fund Seven.
Fund Seven.
Yes.
Mayor, before the council votes on the motion, we do need to see if there's any public comment and give a second for people to call in.
Okay, we'll open up for public comment. We'll give a couple of minutes to see if anyone wants to call in on it.
Jeff, could I, would I need in the motion then to clarify the funding source? So if it was, the motion would be essentially for alternative three with splitting a draw from the reserves of half of what otherwise would come out of, of the park fund?
That's acceptable to me if staff believes it's possible.
Yeah, that's possible.
Are you good with that, Dennis?
Yes.
So split the, split the cost between half of it coming from reserves and half coming in from the park reserves.
And then the lighting is the lighting?
The lighting.
Okay.
And we're all, you know, and if this was the pass, we're talking about the, the sidewalk in front of the library? Is that included in?
Yes.
Parking lot?
Parking lot of the park side of the-
Yeah.
It'd be, it'd be a complete circuit. Someone could walk it.
This is alternative three.
Do you have anybody calling in?
No.
Okay, we'll call it back. We have a, a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call.
Councilmember Bertone?
Yes.
Councilmember Ebner?
No.
Council Mayor Portem Vianum?
Aye.
Councilmember Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Bedar?
Aye.
Let the record reflect, the vote was four to one in favor of. Thank you.
Okay, Recreation Needs Assessment Project, maybe?
Yeah, Dr. Kispin will be coming in to give that presentation. There he is.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Before you, I have a staff report to discuss the Parks and Recreation Needs Assessment in regards to community outreach, virtual town hall, and stakeholder interviews. So in this fiscal year, nineteen twenty, the City Council approved funding to conduct a Parks and Recreation Needs Assessment. The purpose of this assessment is to develop a comprehensive master plan designed to guide the council and its policy and decision-making process, and for future direction and planning efforts. The process of the needs assessment began in February of this year and is scheduled for completion in October. However, due to the COVID-19 pandemic and the order executed by state and local jurisdiction, the project has temporarily been put on hold, awaiting further instructions from state and local health officials. Because there's no indication at this time that the restrictions will be lifted or relaxed, staff recommends that the council approve moving forward with community engagement, with a community engagement process using virtual town hall meetings, workshops, and interviews with stakeholders. This would also include and engage the public through a public outreach campaign with the use of social media platforms. So presently, as it shows here in the, we are here and we're kind of at a, at a halt because typically, this is when you would do your regular town hall meetings and workshops. Since the start of the pandemic and closure of city facilities, the department has continued providing services and programs to the community virtual, through virtual recreation and through collective effort, including the city's PIA- through collective effort, including the city's PIO, the LA County Sheriff's Department, the Chamber of Commerce, local volunteers and a very willing staff. Such programs include the Easter egg hunt, um, the dash, the Arbor Day, social media, um, that was done, you know, some, some videos that we've done on social media. And lastly, the Sandy Miss Cares Project. So all metrics collected and analyzed demonstrate that each of these events or projects have resulted in outstanding feedback and participation by the community. Attached in the staff report are some, um, indications of, of how many hits and, and viewing views we've had on some, on some of those things. Now, um, phase one and two have already been done and, uh, we find ourselves at phase three of this project. Uh, phases, phases one and two included, uh, gathering of data and research of existing documents and historical program information, um, as well as, you know, getting an update of inventory of existing facilities and the evaluation of existing programs and demographic information. The evaluation of the existing conditions of each park, facility, trails and potential park sites, um, is well underway, as well as the evaluation of existing recreation programs, attendance, use of space, consistency, inconsistent with current recreation trends and leisure services industry. Phase three is a, uh, community outreach program which would include scoping sessions, stakeholder interviews, community surveys and polls. The scoping session would be conducted via a virtual town hall meeting using social media platforms such as Facebook Live or YouTube Live and, um, a live only broadcast with participant polling. Meetings in this platform are suitable for specific and general feedback from participants during pre and post meeting. Virtual meetings allow more flexibility for members of the community to participate and engage, especially for members of the community who may not be as comfortable with expressing opinions in a public setting. Now, um, virtual, uh, meetings and, uh, online polling, participation through those , uh, social or, uh, platforms is not a new concept. It has been done for years in some communities and to a very positive result. The idea would be to, starting on the fourteenth, start sending out, uh, emails to approve stakeholders and, uh, with questionnaires and then conduct stakeholder, um, meetings via Zoom or one other, other ways of communicating. So those, those meetings would all be done virtually. The idea here is also to promote this project through a story map site, which is done through GIS, um, in conjunction with our, with our website for the purposes of collecting data, reviewing results and then respond to those, uh, questions, comments and, uh, suggestions.
Hector? Hector? When you, when you talk about story map site, you're talking about using GIS data to specifically target people in an area?
Yes, that is one of the components within the story, within, within the storybook. So later on in this, we have some, um, sort of demonstrations of what involve, what is involved in the, that story time.
Thank you.
So, um, just some dates for you to kind of to, to consider because we are, um, hope, hope, you know, hoping to finish by October of this year, is that if we started this process now, it gives us a few months, uh, to, one, engage the community, hold these town hall meetings and, um, and, you know, do, do the polling and the surveys, which would be done, um, through a variety of different models. There would be phone, online and, um, actual, some, some, um, live, during the live event. So how would the public stay informed of all of this? Uh, we would do social media advertisements, live and recorded online broadcasts and updates, live online participation polling, uh, that gives us the opportunity to continue with this process of the, uh, park recreation needs assessment. And we would be, of course, observing the social distancing practices. So the, uh, live online, uh, polling, you know, some of those, um, things or characteristics that go along with that is that it, you know, it, um, the, the poll will include, you know, characteristics of the park systems, um, of the recreation facilities and such, the issues, along with solutions, uh, and the needs as they relate to parks and recreation from the community. We would be getting that input from the community. So the public outreach campaign through this story, uh, story, uh, map process is, uh, it allows for that sense of community connectivity at this time. We, um, as discussed earlier, our virtual programs have been very successful. We had a great, um, response to the Easter egg dash, um, going out and visiting over fifteen hundred, um, or delivering fifteen hundred baskets to over five hundred residences. The Arbor Day event took, um, we gave away eighty-five trees and, um, and there was a line that started in the, in the library parking lot, coming around to the corner of Eglacia and Second. And then the, um, the views to the, the video that was sort of announcing that, I think we got two thousand, two hundred views. Um, we, we know that people are engaging and looking for these types of, um, programs and/or events, uh, because they are, you know, locked into their homes and can't do a lot of other things. So this, uh, story map, it, it would include, you know, um, a link off the city's website that people could go to and turn to and see, sort of get updates on, on this, uh, real time in many, in many cases. It would, um, it involves two-way communication so people can enter, um, their comments, their, ask questions and get a lot of information from this because it's, it's done, uh, in real time and it's, and it's very dynamic and fluid as opposed to a, a static site, um, such as most websites. So it gives people the opportunity to go there and find out and get more information about the project itself to, um, and answers questions about like, what is a needs assessment? What is the purpose of a needs assessment? So you keep the community informed. Now, the, the results of the polling and the, uh, surveys that are done online would be creating heat maps based on the information that people give as participants and we would be able to target and, you know, the entire city as opposed to, uh, holding these workshops in one particular location where, where people don't want to drive across town to show up or it's inconvenient. This makes it, you, the response is, is much greater than, uh, physically having to show up to a, um, to a workshop. So, um, the results would come through a multi-model, a model survey, so, um, and then each of these tools, um, are announced online as well as through social media. When, um, the outreach method is complete, the results are posted, people feel like they're participating in the process. It would also include virtual park tours, so someone could go in there and, who's never been to, say, Via Verdi Park or Bricks Point Park, for example, they've seen it on a list, they can actually get a virtual tour of the, of the park and, again, get a sense for what is out there.
Hector, just on this, um, so we will know or be able to verify that the people participating are geographically in the city or their residence, right? Or.
That is correct. So, um, it is, you know, I mean, one thing is, people will, will be registering on there to, to go on with their, um, with their name, physical address, not, uh, full name does not have to be included, but a physical address and a name that is then, um, plugged into the map, along with then those participating on, in the live event would also be recorded as to where they're from, because they would be punching that information in. Um, so, and all of that stuff is then collected and received at this story map site, which is only hosted during the time that this is going on. Once the, the project is over, that disappears and it's gone. So it, uh, it's just very engaging, having had experience with a park design in, in my last, um, place of employment. We, we built a park, uh, based on the responses that, that were given, not only, um, at physical or, um, workshops, but most came through virtual workshops to where you can even, uh, do charrettes and different modeling and stuff, all done online.
So people do it from the comfort of their home?
Correct.
Yeah. I, uh, I would offer that, I don't think they feel like they're participating, I think they are participating and contributing.
That, that is correct. And back to the, back to the, um, the sense of, a lot of times people are unwilling to or reluctant to hesitate to participate in a, in a setting where there are a lot of people who are voicing one opinion, right? And so they, they don't want to be any different to go against the grain and so they don't voice their real concern and/or opinion. This takes that away and people can then, um, really participate. So what, what I'm asking you tonight is to, um, approve a stakeholder list that is attached in your packet, which has, um, members of the community based on the recommendations given to us by, by RJM, our consultants. And, uh, that list is attached for your, for your reference there and if you have any questions on, uh, we don't have any specific people chosen or selected at this time, but we have, um, the suggested sort of titles and or positions that would go along with that.
What would, what would these stakeholders do? I mean, how would they differ from the general public?
Well, they, they, they are the general public. It's just, the stakeholders is sort of a title that's given to them for this, for this particular exercise. So for example, number one is one city council member. So I would hope that you would discuss that amongst yourselves and select somebody from the, from the council to participate and then you or they would be called, um, zoomed in virtual meeting by the consultant who would ask you questions. Have you ever been to this park? What do you think of this park? Uh, I've not been privy to the questions that they would be asking, uh, but, uh, those are coming shortly. Uh, so you would be asked a series of questions to talk about the park systems and, and your thoughts on that. So the same goes for all of the other members that are listed in here. And as you can see from the list, it tries to take up a wide breadth of people that are involved in some, some way, shape or form. Uh, there are a place, there is a place, number ten, has two members at large, so those would be, um, members of the community who could be chosen based on, on, um, desire to participate and, uh, and maybe bring a different perspective of things. For example, uh, cultural arts and, um, or landmarks, you know, things that interest them that would have to do with, things that we don't normally think about, but that, uh, some segments of the community do. So, um, you know, we include in here like a large business partner because we have several large corporations and, and companies in town that bring people in on a daily basis. They don't necessarily live in San Dimas, but they spend a lot of time in San Dimas. They have lunch here, they, they maybe come in before to exercise at the rec center, an hour afterward come in and exercise at the rec center. So having, you know, a variety of different activities for people who aren't necessarily San Dimas residents, but spend a lot of time here, makes it attractive for corporations to then say, hey, I want to have my business in San Dimas because of X, Y, Z. Um, you know, that, that is one, um, example. The small business partner would include, uh, downtown business folks, you know, who, um, have an interest in parks and recreation, as you can see from our holiday extravaganza event and/or other things that are done there in the downtown area. There's, um, engagement from those, those folks. They like having the holiday extravaganza there and, uh, want to have a bigger part in that and so maybe Parks and Rec, then, uh, there's collaboration with those folks to figure out what else we can do in the downtown area. So the series of questions that they would be asked would be somewhat catered to the, the person in, in the position, but there's also a list of generic questions that would be asked across the board. So that was, um, any questions on that?
Yeah, I, I take it that, you know, the school district, AYSO, Little League, they, they would make the nomination of their own persons?
Correct.
Okay, and the members at large, how will those be selected?
So, uh, it was, it was our recommendation to give the, uh, the staff the autonomy to, uh, vet and can, and put some names together for your consideration. We just didn't want to, you know, have the names out at this time in, in a public meeting such as this to, you know, kind of go through those, those names, uh, for discussion. But, um, so it would be up to staff to recommend some folks based on maybe putting together a, um, list of questions out there, much like we, you know, when we advertise for a commission spot or something, to, um, say, would you be interested in participating and why? And so then we would, uh, allow the council, the, uh, you know, the council would have the, the ultimate decision-making authority as to who's selected.
To the slate.
Sorry?
Never mind. Shouldn't these be these questions that the entire community is involved in?
They would be, they would be posed, well, no, I mean, some of them will be at the virtual town hall meetings. So, you know, you have to do that in, in a, in a setting where you're going to be getting those questions in that kind of, the, the story site will collect information from people all the time, twenty-four seven during that process, during that time, so people can go on and, you know, see the questions, respond, but these are more specific to the, the people who are, take, play a part in some way, shape or form in the parks and recreation department.
I, I could see, you know, the council, you know, approving the, you know, the, the names that you get, give us, but I also could see that some of these things, some of these positions should come directly straight from the organization that they're, they're doing. You know, I, I'm not going to know who.
Of course.
San Dimas Little League wants, but, you know.
Of course. No, we, we would reach out to them, they would, I would assume would appoint a person from their organization who then would be on the list that then finally would come to the council.
Right. And we're saying Parks and Recreation Commissioners, we'd use two of them.
Um, well, 'cause we, you know, and that was kind of a, um, my error in a sense because I wanted to have a, um, somebody from our urban forest subcommittee, which we, we, we have and it's kind of been put on hold as well, but they were tasked with coming up with, um, revised language for the municipal code with regards to trees and tree removals. And so, um, there's that and then there would be a Parks and Rec Commissioner now. Um, city manager Durant also brought up to me that it would be a good thought to have somebody from the equestrian commission on this because that is a recreational component, uh, as well, trails are, that is, you know, and, and so, um, I think they have purview over trails and, and the equestrian center and so, equestrian center being in, located in one of our parks, it's definitely counted as an asset to the city. And so, um, that also may be something that we consider either adding an eleventh or looking at, um, you know, where we have two members at large, maybe losing one or, you know, some, some other different, uh, you know, list that kind of resembles this for the most part, though.
I, I think that's a good idea and I think the, uh, equestrian commissioners, I know, are, um, pretty, um, uh, and want to be involved, I guess the best way of put it is. Um, I would just ask that if you're going to have two commissioners from any commission, then they all should be the same, so there's same representation from each commission for whatever commission.
Very good point. Yeah, no, that's a good point. So, um, we'll, we can, uh, go back and kind of tweak this list a little bit to where that, that is consistent as far as commissioners go and, um, and include the equestrian commission and, um, and then maybe make it the, uh, urban forest subcommittee as one of the others who, because trees play a, a big part in our park system.
Would it be, would it be possible to hold off on this and wait until we could have literally people in the audience to be given presentations or does it have to be, be done now when we have this virtual process?
So that is the, that is the question, I guess, for, for the council, you know, to, to decide. Now, as, as mentioned, through the storybook, um, you know, site. Now, as mentioned, through the storybook, you know, site, the participation levels based on not only anecdotal data, but also from surrounding communities who have done this, or maybe not so close as far as surrounding, but Mission Viejo is currently doing this. The city of Huntington Beach is doing this. There's a couple other cities, Ratchet, Bumanga, who have done this, city of Santa Monica. So they've done it, they've seen success from it.
Well, don't get me wrong, I think you've done an excellent job, and I approve everything that you've done. I just think this limits the people that can participate. And this is very limiting as far as I'm concerned, and that's why I can't support it. But that's not to put a negative on your work that you've done, because I think you've done an excellent job. But I don't think this is the best way to go about it. I think we're just limiting the amount of people that can participate in it.
Can I ask a question along this line? So the committee you're talking about, Hector, the subcommittee, what, about 10 people you're saying?
Currently, there's 10 categories. There are two categories, Parks and Rec Commissioners and Members-at-Large that have two. So ultimately, this list is 12, 14.
Okay. And so is that subcommittee supposed to take comments from the public at large and kind of boil them down into a recommendation sometime?
Of course, yes. So that's further, like, if you go back to the...
Yeah, I got it. I just was wondering about that. Okay, so what I'd like to, this needs to be done, and it's a great idea. The virtual parks has some challenges. You know, some people are just more likely to participate that way than others. But to get that, and they have more people participating if they don't have to, you know, go to a certain building at night and do it. What I'm interested in is how do we get the regular old person that's just knocking on a random door someplace in the city, and, you know, that person is interested in parks, but they're not involved in anything. They're not in any commission, they're not, you know. So how do we get their input? Because I want to, you're talking about the Civic Center Park, for example. I want to get the input of somebody who goes out there and plays frisbee and just, you know, lets their dog run free when they're not supposed to. But just to, you know, make it those people that just walk through the every block and pass and get regular people.
So as part of the polling and the survey, a hard copy letter would go out to each resident. There would also be the postings online, not only using, you know, our website as it currently does, at, you know, outreach, as well as social media platforms, as well as the Storytime GIS site. So, you know, as far as public outreach, I believe you would be getting as much, if not more, because, participation, because when you're doing, you know, physical workshops, you're limited to a number of people who could attend. And, you know, unless you do workshops in perpetuity, there's always going to be more people who want to continue coming, I would think.
You know, I think my phone only has a two, it's just out after two hours for whatever reason. So I was just almost done with my comment, though, that we often get the people who are what I'm going to call the lone quonies, and they're in leadership positions, and we need those people to do and to input and everything like that. But a lot of times, we don't get the people that use the facilities, but are just the, you know, what I'm going to call everyday folks that aren't interested in being on a commission or anything like that. But they're just important because they're using the field. But that's the challenge. I'm just posing that out there to you.
Hector, I'm supportive of the recommended actions, but I hear Councilmember Bertone's concern, understanding that some members of the community may not be able to access some of the technology that's being proposed. So is there any accommodation for that? And, I mean, I would almost wonder if, when you were going to do your live sessions, if you could not leverage the public access channel and also stream that live at the same exact time, so everyone gets the same exact information, and then be able to allow people to call in so you could capture feedback, perhaps, that otherwise would not be virtually engaged? That's, I don't, I'm just, that's an easier way that I think the community is used to engaging in that may help capture those folks who otherwise may not be able to log on?
I wouldn't see why, I don't see why it wouldn't be possible. I think that that is probably a very good suggestion to have both, you know, mediums, you know, to say that you have both a virtual Facebook Live event going at the same time that you're streaming it and on cable, much like this council meeting is right now.
Would you still be able to capture, if people were able to either call in or email, perhaps, if you formatted a questionnaire that could still get you to capture what you're trying to capture, but let people engage in that way?
Yes, and, you know, it's not, so think of this as a three-month community outreach that is not limited to one single event. The Storytime or Storybook GIS site is for the entire time that this is live or going, that where that virtual site is, that you can go in, enter, look at things, see things as they've been updated, workshop one, workshop two, workshop three. I believe that, you know, that at this point, it's either we begin this process, and maybe by the time we get to workshop three, you know, the restrictions will be lifted and we can have an event at a facility. But if we're going at the same pace, as I was saying, no more than 50, no more than 100 people, we're limiting ourselves anyways, I believe, by doing the physical, attending a workshop. Whereas with this, you don't have those limitations.
Taking advantage of dead time, no pun intended, but literally.
Okay. What do you propose that this project's going to cost you?
It's already been done. I mean, the funding is there. We have somebody that's, you know, currently working on this. The budget was $120,000, and the project came in under budget. We actually asked them for a few more things, which is giving us not only things that are like pie in the sky dreams of what, you know, the rec center should look like or what the Equestrian Center should look like, or what the community's clamoring for, but associated with that are maintenance and operations costs for 20 years out, for example. And comparing San Dimas to surrounding communities, not necessarily against national averages or standards, but the surrounding communities. And we've listed those communities out for them, the same communities that we compare our salary studies against, and those that are relatively the same as San Dimas in many ways, and so, and to see what they're spending per capita on parks and recreation and compare it so that we have a benchmark, right? So that we know what's going on, because otherwise, we really don't know. Are we, maybe we're spending too much, you know, on parks and recreation, but maybe we're not. And so we don't know that information unless this work is done. And at this time, being that we're here, which is when now we have to do our community engagement, we've done everything we could here to collect data to put into this community engagement so that then we can continue and stay on track. So basically, my request or recommendations today would be to, one, to approve this stakeholder list with some changes here, as noted, which is one person per commission, including the Equestrian Commission in this list, and doing the cable television, where people can call in at the same time that we're doing some of those virtual Facebook Live events. And, did I miss anything? So, because we can't at this point continue any further in this process unless we overcome this hurdle. And, you know, if we're going to start it, we can start it, and then in a couple of months, this is a three-month process, maybe by that time, we'll be, find ourselves in another place where we can say, hey, let's do a couple of, you know, workshops where people can come in.
But as it stands right now financially, it's not costing us anything, because you already have the money.
Sorry?
As of right now, it's not going to cost us anymore, because you've already got the money allocated.
Yes, I mean, to them, it's, to the consultant, it's probably, you know, I mean, this is probably more work than what it would, but they're not charging us anything extra. They're just trying to get through a process here and trying to help us with it.
You know, you list here, Facebook Live, YouTube Live, and so forth. Is it possible for the council to get notices when this is going to be placed on, like Facebook?
Of course, yeah. The dates will be all listed. It's all going to be on line, and we can make you well aware of the calendar.
You know, so we'd be aware of it?
Hector, if I could just, based upon a couple of the questions that were asked by council, I think there might be a little confusion as to what the role of the stakeholders are. It's my understanding from our conversations that the stakeholders are not a subcommittee, so they wouldn't be meeting as a committee.
No.
What they are is they are individuals that have identified that might have some unique insight as to, from their experience. So they would be one-on-one interviews from the consultant to the stakeholders, asking them basically the same questions, getting their individual feedback, but it's not a subcommittee that would be meeting and filtering information.
Individual meetings, one-on-one, between consultant or, between consultant and the one stakeholder. So it's not like they would then come up with all the suggestions and ideas for what the parks and recreation assessment should look like. I mean, those are just a subcategory of the entire community. And all of that information will weigh in and come to you here for public comment and everything at a public meeting down here, you know? So those recommendations would all be laid out in such a way where you can prioritize and look and see what the findings were.
Hector, I have a suggestion to make it, to get more input, because I know you're going to have the online, ongoing thing for three months, and that's great, virtual town halls or meetings. I would add two components to the plan. One is that a, some kind of paper alternative. So if members of the senior commission or whoever, just make it known, it can't just probably be on the website or emails or, you know, whatever, because how is the community going to find out otherwise? But if the word can get out that there's a paper alternative to, however the survey is done, you know, checkboxes or, you know, general free answers or whatever they are. So I think that would address some of what Dennis is talking about, just to have that alternative. The second proposal I would make to my fellow council members is that in addition to the stakeholders that are on the list and the categories, and there's like 12 of them apparently, that each council member be able to appoint one or maybe two individuals or, you know, maybe it's a couple or, damn, kids or something like that, that we might know from out in the community who are less well-known to the powers that be and that might have some insight on some things. Because we all have people coming up to us all the time asking, they're not people that everybody else knows, just have some ideas and want to know what's happening or can they get this or that done. So we've done this in the past. It's been a while since council members had an appointment type of a role in things. But I would suggest that we, with that, I could support it that those two things were added to the program.
So is there a minimum number or maximum number that you feel that this organization that's going to do these interviews could do?
I believe they would be happy to do more, but this is the list that was given to us, you know? And we actually maybe went a little further by saying two Parks and Recreation Commissioners, but this list was sort of outlined for us like this, at 10, 10 different. And it's like, so where would you, I don't know where you would stop. So I think I heard Councilmember Ebner say, one or two appointees per council member, right? So that's council pleasure. You know, I mean, I can ask the consultant to see, but I think this is, they were hoping to not, you know, I mean, they have a set list of people they typically do, so that's not...
It's not a subcommittee, it's going to be just individual interviews.
That's right.
So...
I mean, it's just a half an hour interview of, you know, five or 10 additional people. I mean, if you really want to get what the public wants, then why not have a big cross-section of people? And I think we all have maybe different constituencies, different people we know, and having a couple appointees like that would be a really good idea to get other people involved. And that way, you don't have the same people that are always having input, having input again. You have additional people.
I think I could support John's idea, if we limit it to one appointee from each commissioner. I think the more people, or each councilman, the more people you're going to have is going to be better input, but the more people you have is going to be more hectic. So I personally believe that I could have no problem if the council's pleasure was to appoint one person from each councilman. And if they don't want to do that, what I would, as I was thinking before, before John made his observation, I was actually thinking that there should be two people from the council on this. But I could drop that thought and do one appointee from each councilman.
I think, and Hector, correct me if I'm wrong, but that needs assessment ultimately comes back to council for review and presentation, right? So, I mean, my concern would be that if councils got their fingers in this, then why are we doing it? I mean, that's, you know, I don't want to circumvent the community input. I'd rather have that majority of community input, so when we get it, it's, you know, we've not meddled with it too much, I guess, is what I'm getting at.
And I believe that's the same feeling from the consultant. So having one council member on there, again, it's one interview, 30 minutes or however long it takes, through a series of questions of one of your peers, you know, one of your body here, to answer a few questions about the community and the park system and whatever. Like I said, I don't have those questions yet, but I can certainly share those. They're not going to be secret, so as to see what they're asking.
And you don't need to name anybody tonight?
I would, I would, no, I don't need, you know, it doesn't need to be tonight. What I was hoping for tonight is to start the process with the community outreach, posting it online, saying this process is beginning, letting people know that this is happening. And the stakeholder interviews, though there were some dates, the consultant would be reaching out to the people that we would decide on, you know, again, going back to what the recommendations from staff, to then begin the interviews. The interviews probably could be moved a little bit weak here, weak there, you know, kind of thing, but in order to stay on track, again, this is their wheelhouse, not mine, so I'm not sure exactly about that, but I hope that answers your question.
Speaking to John's point, would we be then modifying the number 10 stakeholder, the Members-at-Large, which there were two on the list previously? Would that then be five, or are we talking an additional five stakeholders to basically make that number seven?
Eric, I'd say make it another five. I mean, the more, the better, actually, if you think about it.
I'll offer that, I'm fine with whatever council decides, but I will publicly say here and now that whoever wants my appointment, just contact City Hall. Because, I mean, at the end of the day, I think the process, as it's laid out with the stakeholder list in and of itself facilitates getting the feedback. So, you know, for each of us to have an appointee, while I understand the premise of the idea, I think anybody that, you know, I think whether we have the stakeholder list as proposed or whether we all throw in five people, I mean, most of the people on the commissions were at some point moved by one of the members of council, and I think they're represented there with their voices, so...
Yeah, and it was just pointed out by Tim Pagano, Recreation Manager, that the number that they have is 12, the 12 interviews. Now, that's what the scope of service is right now. So if more interviews are conducted, more people are included onto the list, then that changes the scope a bit. changes the scope a bit, I'm sure it can be modified, but just, just as a, for your information.
Well, as it counts right now, we have 14 bodies.
Yes, again, because that was my kind of, you know, my math.
Was this adding equestrian?
That's right, because the equestrian was an add-on, but also because we had a double in the Recreation Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission.
So it'll be one Parks and Rec Commissioner, one Equestrian Commissioner?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I like the proposal, so I'll make a motion that we adopt the proposal, or whatever action we need to take to move it forward, take staff's recommendation, with two changes, one, that there be some kind of paper alternative to be determined what exactly that is, and secondly, that each council member have one appointee to the stakeholder interview body.
Can I just...
And just to clarify that motion, so do you mean, John, one appointee in addition to all of the other individuals that are listed on the stakeholder list in the agenda packet?
I do not have that list, it did not come into my packet, but I know what you're talking about and I can utilize it, so yes, the answer is yes. So there'd be, I think 17 is what we're up to now.
Yes.
Would be the total number.
Yes, it would be 17.
Can I just clarify that since the scope of work includes 12 interviews, that there, do we know if there would be an additional cost by adding more?
I don't, I don't know that at this time, you know, time for the consultant, you know, adding five additional interviews, they do charge by the hour, so it's a kind of an à la carte thing, maybe it's not a, it's an incremental increase in the grand scheme of things, when considering this is $120,000, it may just be minimal, but, you know, again, council pleasure.
Gotcha.
You've already discussed these, this list with the consultant, right?
They are the ones that gave me the list, they generated these ideas as to who to put on it.
Okay.
I just basically added a number, and the city council member, which they then kind of to Brian, Councilmember Vienna's point, they said, "Two," you know, word of caution on that, is that, you know, typically council members wouldn't be included for the reasons that were mentioned, but, you know, it's supposed to be kind of an open forum for members of the community.
I wouldn't have any problem if we dropped the city council member myself. I agree.
I agree with that as well.
I'd be fine with that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I want to hear what all these other people say, and what they're doing, and I...
All right, we're down to 16 people now, it's going to cost us like 400 extra dollars out of the $120,000, let's take it out of the park fund.
I can't support that.
You know what, I'm more apt to just say, go with what's been submitted to the, from the Parks and Rec people, this is their baby, everything they've done so far has been a plus, so I think that, my own personal opinion is, I'll go with the list, but I'll also drop the city council person and leave the members at large there. If we're going to leave two parks, guys, I agree with Ryan, that we need two commission people so they don't, two equestrian people so that they don't, you know, whatever they feel.
Mr. Mayor, I think John had a motion we needed a second, and then we can go from there and then...
Did we want to amend the motion to remove the council member, or are we going with it?
I would amend the motion to remove the council member, so it's a paper alternative and a five additional members, one from each council member appointed, and remove the council member. That's the motion.
I'll second that.
Mayor, before we vote, we do need to have public comment.
Okay, did we have somebody call in a few minutes ago? Pardon me?
Wait one minute, no, we're just on screen.
Okay. So let me understand what the motion is, just so I'm sure, it's going to be the stakeholder list dropping the city council member and adding five additional appointees, that's the motion?
Yes, one from each council member.
Pardon me?
One from each council member, so this council member, you can pick, you know, John Doe, and I can pick Jane Smith, and that kind of thing.
And the motion also included a paper option for people to participate separately from the Facebook Live and YouTube Live.
Yes, because there was a, there was some kind of survey, wasn't there Hector, or was there some kind of way of inputting?
Yes, so the survey is done in three, three different modes or models. One is online survey, one is a phone survey, and the other is a write-in survey. So that is, that addresses, I think, your paper alternative, but unless you had something else in mind?
Absolutely, no, okay, take off the paper option, I didn't understand that, so it's simply then removing the council member and adding one appointee for each council member to the stakeholder interviews. Otherwise, it's as is.
Does it include the addition of the cable option?
Yeah.
Okay. I, obviously, I will not be supporting the motion, I think that the community, this is literally a needs assessment, I think there's sufficient community input across the board, both from the members of the commissions that are appointed, plus the general members of the community that are already included in the list of authorized stakeholders. I think if there's any chance that there will be additional funding or additional costs incurred, I think just having five additional people who we decide to pick anecdotally is a waste of money, so I will not be supporting the motion as proposed.
No calls? Okay, we have a motion to drop the council member, add five additional members at large, appoint it, one appointed by each councilman, so the motion's been moved and seconded? Okay? We'll call?
Councilmember Bertone?
No.
Councilmember Ebner?
Aye.
Councilmember Mayor Protam Vienna?
No.
Councilmember Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Badar?
No.
Let the record reflect that that vote was a three to two vote opposing the recommendation as made by Councilmember Ebner.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve staff's recommendation, item one, the stakeholder list as amended to reflect the removal of one council member, to be able to have one representative of the Parks and Recreation Commission, one representative of the Equestrian Commission, and add one more member of the community to the members at large list. I'd also move that item number two is brought forward as written, but amended to include the cable, TV median, as well as the paper survey, and item three also be brought forward for approval.
And you're dropping one Parks and Recreation Commissioner and dropping one Equestrian Commissioner?
I would be taking the two Parks and Recreation Commissioners, that would become one, and we would add one Equestrian Commissioner, and then we would add one member of the community.
And remove the council member.
And remove the council member.
So now we're talking 12 members?
Yes, sir, and I believe that's consistent with the proposal from the scope.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I'm totally in favor of the recreational needs assessment, and I think it's pretty petty not to have a couple of different additional members, so I am going to vote in favor of this, because it needs to be done, but I thought it was pretty silly not to accept what amounts to four additional members for interviews.
I do believe those people, Hector, correct me if I'm wrong, that those people can participate in any one of the several options for the participation opportunities for if their feedback to be collected, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Certainly can, the interviewing process is a different kind of process, that's why we have it, and that's why the consultant wants to have it, we've all, I don't know if we all, but I've been part of that kind of information gathering where they interview individuals, and it's a lot different than just, I shouldn't say just, than the other part, you mean both parts. But I'll be, I'll vote in favor of it.
Dennis, any comments?
No.
Yeah, I personally would like to see two Parks and Recreation Commissioners and two Equestrian Commissioners, and I'm okay with two members at large, but so, that's what I would prefer to see, so I guess we'll call the vote.
I'm perfectly happy, actually, will that put us?
It'll put us two, one body over.
Just amend the motion and do that.
Yeah, I'm happy to amend the motion at the request of the mayor to reflect two Equestrian Commissioners, two Parks and Recreation Commissioners, and one member of the members, one additional, I'm sorry, you wanted to reduce...
Reduce it to two.
To two.
That's what I would prefer.
Okay, all right, so elimination of the council member, and basically, we're going to have two members of the Equestrian Commission, two members of the Parks and Recreation Commission. Is that correct?
That's the way I understand it.
All right. Eric, do you accept the amendment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Could you call a roll?
Councilmember Bertone?
No.
Councilmember Ebner?
Aye.
Councilmember, Mayor Protam Vienna?
Aye.
Councilmember Weber?
Aye.
Mayor Badar?
Aye.
Let the record reflect that passes by a four to one vote with Councilmember Ebner opposing, I'm sorry, Councilmember Bertone opposing.
Okay.
Could I request something? This is a checkup, I knew this was to help me, to be informed when it's placed on Facebook or whatever, so I can, with John's help, John? Go to it and read it?
Absolutely.
Sure, thank you very much, Hector. You know, just to say something, and John, please chime in to help me with this, but I remember years passed, I wasn't on the commission or on the council, but there was an incident where each councilman appointed, in fact, that was the original Public Safety Law Enforcement Committee that we used to appoint, and it was a good process, but the reality is time has changed and we're moving on, but I do remember at one point, even the Festival of Arts, each councilman had an appointee to it, so it's not a, it's not a new and novel idea, so it's definitely a tool that we could put into our toolbox to think about on other issues.
Yep, that's right, I agree.
All right. So let's move on, status report of emergency response, continuing of the operation plan for local government, I guess I can?
Yeah, just kind of a COVID-19 update, and so a couple of things, I kind of highlighted a few areas that I was going to cover, I'll cover rather briefly. As far as the modifications to the safer-at-home orders from both the state and the county, as most people are aware from the media, that the last week, the governor released some restrictions on some, his order, and the county followed suit, and so there's been a lot of confusion, and every day there's new information that makes it, in some cases, even more confusing. But the latest information is that effective May 8th throughout LA County, there was a relaxation of some of the safer-at-home orders. And one of the things that both the governor and the county are very clear about when they make these changes, is they're not lifting the safer-at-home order, and they're not lifting the requirements for social distancing and masking in public. What they're doing is making modifications, which would allow for more types of businesses and public areas to be open to the public. So on Friday, in LA County, the order was relaxed to allow for businesses such as florists, toy stores, bookstores, clothing stores, music stores, and sporting goods stores to allow for curbside pickup only. These businesses are not permitted to allow customers within their business, but can allow for pickup at curbside, and they also must continue to adhere to certain protocols within those businesses. In addition, car dealership showrooms were allowed to reopen again with modifications, and golf courses allowed it to reopen again with modifications, as well as trail systems throughout the county, as well as city trails. The county also yesterday released guidelines for opening of beaches effective tomorrow, Wednesday, so there's, beaches will be open in LA County, again with certain restrictions. Just today, the governor announced some guidelines for the reopening of offices, restaurants for dine-in, malls for pickup only, outdoor museums and car washes. So those restrictions are posted on the state's website, but they have not given any date as to when those types of businesses would be reopened, and that's at the state level, however, the county still needs to address whether they will allow for those types of businesses to be opened at the county level with certain restrictions. As was mentioned earlier, there was a comment made by the Health Director of LA County regarding the stay-at-home order being sustained through the end of July into August, and I think I clarified that with the county's comment earlier. Suffice to say, this is a very fluid environment, and as I said, these things are changing daily, we anticipate that tomorrow the county will be releasing some of their guidelines and restrictions for things such as restaurants. So that is changing rapidly. What, a couple of things the city is doing is that we have developed a small business resiliency program, we're working with the Chamber of Commerce to assist local businesses in understanding when these types of restrictions are released, if there's any ways that the city and chamber can help them as far as providing them information and guidance and directing them to resources, so we've had at least one meeting with the chamber to kind of roll out that program, so that is in place. We provided the council with an updated memo regarding this Sandy Miss Cares Program, we gave you a copy on your DAS, which just kind of outlines the number of people that we've been able to provide services to over the last several weeks, the business community that has been partners with us in this program, and how that program is operating, so we've given you that memo as well. We are in the final stages of updating and modifying our city continuity plan, so we anticipate that that'll be brought back to the city council at your next meeting. And the other area that we touched on earlier has to do with the implementation of some type of modified recreation programs for the summer, and again... for the summer. And again, I've mentioned in previous memos to the council that our recreation staff has been really thinking outside the box and trying to come up with some modified programs that might be appropriate and still fit within the guidelines of restrictions that might be in place throughout the summer. But as I just mentioned, we don't know when those restrictions will be modified or, or relaxed. So it's really hard to, to move some of these programs forward. However, we realize that this week, we really need to make some hard decisions on things such as whether we'll have any type of aquatic program for the summer, whether we'll have any types of daycare programs or park programs, because there is a ramp-up time and we'll need to hire staff and coordinate those programs as well as advertise them. And so, we really will be, our, our recreation division will be making some real, probably have to make some hard decisions. And I anticipate that we'll probably give you some kind of report maybe next Wednesday when we have our budget study session, as far as whether we feel that there's any type of programming that we might be able to offer for the summer. One specific program that was brought up by a couple of council members was a drive-in type activity. And the recreation department provided you with a memo that kind of outlined what they had been thinking about for that type of program. And again, we're kind of still moving forward with those planning. But again, we have to wait and see what kind of restrictions might be in place for June and July, to see if that type of program would still be viable. I do know that according to the county, that that type of a drive-in type activity is, is currently not allowed under the current orders, because there were some churches that have suggested that they moved to that kind of a model for their congregation and services. And the county has said strictly that that's not allowable. As well as I know that there's school districts that were trying to do maybe some type of a drive-in type graduation ceremony. And the county also said that that would not be consistent with the current orders. So we're kind of still in this wait-and-see mode. As far as our city staffing, for the last several weeks, we've had some of our staff working at home. And we are moving towards bringing most of our employees back to working in our city facilities. And once we find out guidelines as far as office space, we will be looking to open up our city facilities. We don't have any timelines yet. But one thing we've been working with, we have an in-house committee of staff that's working on when we do open up our public facilities, what types of modifications and restrictions will be in place. And if there's some physical things like barriers and signage that we need to put into place, we're working on developing those types of modifications. So that when it is time for us to open up, we'll have all those things in place. So that's kind of a, kind of an overview. And as I said, this, this changes by the hour sometimes. So I try and provide you at least daily updates on updated information. So if I'd be happy to answer any specific questions you might have.
No, thank you.
Okay.
Any, any questions? John, you have anything?
Yep. Thanks, Ken.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right, oral communications. Do we have any calls, members of the audience? Just one moment. It showed me that we have one.
Thank you for calling the San Dimas City Council meeting. You're live.
Sean Katsaris here. Good evening, City Council, and my fellow residents. The events that have transpired will forever leave a mark in the city of San Dimas's history. My cohort and I, Gary Andley, organized this demonstration out of an urgency to right the wrongs of the deal that, had our councilman not informed us, would have been swept under the rug. And the aftermath of that decision felt by the citizens of San Dimas. It was incumbent upon us, with the anger and confusion, to act and do what was right, to lead the community, to have that energy expressed in a productive and peaceful demonstration about our discontent for this closed-door deal. On the day of the protest, everyone showed up with a passion in their hearts and iron will to put pressure on Motel 6, but this could not proceed. After an hour of the demonstration, we all heard from Councilman Eric Weber, Mayor Bertam Ryan Vienna, and Mayor Emmett Bedar about the county and G6 Hospitality's plan to fill all 118 rooms of homeless in across LA County, who would not be receiving a background check, where the county would contract a private security firm and place one security guard per 50 rooms into Motel 6. During his speech, Mayor Bedar informed us that the CEO of G6 Hospitality, Motel 6, would be withdrawing from negotiations with the LA County Board of Supervisors. This brought excitement and a sense of accomplishment to both the residents of San Dimas and support from our neighbors from adjacent cities who are dealing with LA County's initiative, Project Room Key. First and foremost, I want to thank CEO Rob Alesschi for withdrawing from Project Room Key. You made the right choice in heeding the concerns for the residents of San Dimas. Secondly, to our representatives on the San Dimas City Council, you all did your community a solid in informing us what the county was doing under our noses. You no longer, you are no longer the City Council of the past, but the City Council of a new pioneering era. No more are you going to sit on the sidelines and say, quote, "I don't get involved with the state or federal," unquote, or county in this case. To the Board of Supervisors, next time you decide to go forward with an initiative or proposal, let the residents of San Dimas know. To our detractors who call us nimby's and that the residents of San Dimas are heartless, according to our homeless count from LA HSA, we are currently housing 50% of our local homeless. Had Project Room Key been initiated, it would have displaced our local homeless back onto the streets. And where would they have gone? Your narrow-minded and arrogant cosmopolitanism needs to stay out of our affairs. And finally, this wouldn't have been even possible without you, the residents of San Dimas. But it's not over. This should be a litmus test for everyone. Do not take for granted that your leaders won't try to throw you under the bus or sell you out. For those who think that nothing will change, that being active in politics is a waste of time, that politics doesn't matter, guess again. The old saying, "You may not be interested in politics, but politics is interested in you," is a saying that should be ingrained in you. When we come together and focus on what we can agree on and what is best for our community, can we make real change? Change starts in your own backyard. Dear residents, this is only just the beginning. And for that, I yield back the balance of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. No more? I see we have no more. City manager, report?
Nothing further to report.
City attorney?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Members of the city council, council reports on meetings attended at the expense of the local agency? Seeing none individual members. John?
Oh, okay, yeah, sure. Couple things. One is on the quality of the video, and you mentioned this before, Emmett. But I was going to bring that up at the, at the end anyway. I, I was looking at the streaming for a little bit of the time when the slides were up. But the, the quality is poor, and it's not really that much better on streaming, or it's not, you can't read those numbers anyway, where, where you should be able to. So there must be a way of making that better, at, at least the streaming app. I understand the broadcast limitations that we're, we're fighting, but there must be a way of doing it. And I'm not sure how, you know, technically what it is, if we're feeding into the broadcast and then we're coming back out to the stream, and that's why it's so bad. But if that were the case, we should separate it or go to the stream first, and then, then the broadcast. But anyhow, so that's, that's just one comment that I, I really think we should look at that. As one of the, as the one who originally proposed way back when that we televise our meetings, I think we've suffered long enough. So we should get some better definition in our, in our, in our broadcast, or in our streaming, anyway. Okay. The other thing was that I was disappointed in the Civic Center Park, the Civic Center Park plan, let's put it this way. When we discussed this a while back, we talked about how Second Street, east of the glacier, would integrate and look like it was part of in the land, the way it was landscaped and lighted and Parkway and everything else, like the west side of Second Street. So if you go from San Dimas Avenue on Second Street, you would go and it's a really nice stretch there, and then you would go to where the park is, and the same kind of thing would happen. Instead, unfortunately, we've done what we have done way too many times, and that's take a parcel and do a piecemeal plan for it, and not take into consideration the rest of the, of the surrounding, surrounding area. So we're going to have these nice nostalgic, take, I'll just give one example, you'll have the nice nostalgic lights on the, on the park side of Second Street. But on the north side, the non-park side, we've got a couple Cobra headlights on wooden poles. And this should have been, as was discussed when we gave the, gave the direction to the, to the, to public works and parks, to be a, an integrated project, to where Second Street would improve that whole block. So I'm not sure what we should be doing, or how we're going to fix that in the future. I'm open to ideas. But we really need, once again, to understand that when we do any kind of project, it should be integrated and part of the surrounding. And not just make it itself look good, but help make the, the property across the street and everything else around it look like it's part of the same street, as opposed to, you know, the, you know, one side and the other side completely different. So that, that's my comment about that. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank, thank you, John. Maybe you could talk to, call Sherry and talk to her about that tomorrow?
I will. I can talk to Sherry, yeah. I, I don't want to give direction or anything like that, but I can discuss, you know, see what her thoughts are.
Yeah, just, yeah, probably wouldn't hurt. All right, Eric?
So first of all, thank you to the Parks and Recs Department for putting together that Arbor Day event. I made it out with my son, and he had a, he had a blast out there picking up his tree and his poppies, planted those, waiting for those to sprout. Being able to do that safely, I think they, they were able to pull that off pretty well. In addition, it seems like it was well-attended and, and it was well-received by the community, which is always good, which is obviously challenging with this COVID-19 situation. Thank you to the San Dimas community as well for all of the input on the Project Room Key. I will say there was emails flowing from my email inbox, I think, you know, a few every second. But I got emails for and against the Project Room Keys, and I appreciate input from both sides. One of the, I think it was a gentleman from El Monte Union High spoke during public comment at the beginning of this meeting. And he brought up that collaboration is key to solving the issue of homelessness, and I absolutely agree with that. But I think in this particular case, unfortunately, the citizens of the city kind of felt like there was a lack of collaboration when this project was put together. And I think that may have been a driving factor behind a lot of the opposition to it. So I think that's all I've got.
Brian? Brian?
Let me see your notes really quick. Just kidding. First thing, I want to go ahead and ask, you know, something that councils discussed over time, and I think it's time that we start looking into things, is revisiting codes that may be outdated or perhaps not functional in one capacity or another. One such code, which is 18.518.170 grading design, had come into question recently. I had the opportunity to review it. I'd like to see a staff presentation on the history of this specific code, its practicality in today's world. I think at some point, I'd like to look at it and potentially consider a municipal code text amendment regarding grading restrictions. I think it's resulting in a loss of revenue. And that's, you know, what I'd like to get some clarity on behind that. So I don't know if there's anyone else on council that would be interested in such a presentation.
Absolutely. I think fitting into a lot of the campaigning that I've done, there was a lot of feedback in regards to the city being dedicated and making itself better. And if there's ways that we can improve upon ourselves, I think it's incumbent upon us to do that. So I would absolutely like to see that.
Thank you. All right. Same thing as, you know, I, I heard the comments earlier from members of the community regarding the exclusive negotiation agreement with Pioneer Square or whoever, PSQ three or four, or whatever it is. If we can get an update on that and see where we're at, I'd be appreciative. And lastly, this Project Room Key matter. Interesting, past five days, seven days, I want to thank every person in the community that sent their feedback, regardless of what their position is. Number one, engaging is critical. And it is critical that we hear from everybody in the community to make sure that you are represented. To that end, there were folks, as, as some of you may recall, last Thursday, the council had a closed session. And ultimately, out of that closed session, the council ultimately did not take any legal action to challenge Project Room Key. As a matter of fact, council and city attorney, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe council essentially directed the city attorney to work with the county to see if we could come to some sort of solution. And so, that was the action of the council. Community members seem to have become a little concerned regarding the transparency that was communicated or ironically communicated, or the lack thereof transparency that was communicated, both from the county and felt in part, part of that was from the city. To the citizens in the community, I assure you, as the city manager sent us the information, the information that you were getting pretty much was as good as the information we were getting. And that's how quickly this information was evolving. And so, when it seemed as though, you know, there was something to be concerned about, you know, I, I made my post on social media, and people seemed to become more aware and in an attempt to raise the level of awareness and consciousness. I will share with you that, at the same time last week, the LA County Homeless Services Authority, LASSA, posted on their Twitter page that, something to the effect that there's no turning back. And I'm actually going to read you this tweet really quick from LASSA, so that the community can hear specifically what was said from LASSA. And this was on May 6th, 2020. And it's from the LA Homeless Services Authority, or on Twitter, @LAHomeless. "Now that we know what is possible, there's no turning back. #ProjectRoomKey. We are achieving a rapid, unprecedented expansion of our homeless services and shelter system. When the immediate threat of coronavirus has passed, we cannot go back to the status quo." And so, I think that something that I think was concerning to many members of the community, to include me, was the lack thereof a transitional plan once Project Room Key came to our community. How are we going to get these people more effective services? How is that going to tax the infrastructure, what we have here? And I think the city, as someone else had talked to earlier, spoke to earlier, has done a really good job in addressing its homeless. So, and to that end, I personally have been tarred and feathered in social media regarding this from folks that seemingly are not from this community. And I will have everyone know that I've been a homeless advocate on the city council since I've been elected. I'll have everyone know that my brother-in-law, who recently was released from prison because of various prison reform efforts, is currently housed, fortunately, in a motel, but will likely return likely return to the streets as he continues his battle with heroin and substance abuse for a system that lacks adequate supervision and services to be able to service any of these people in a meaningful way. And that's what happens when communities ultimately take on more than they can chew, when organizations, when the government does. San Dimas's homeless count 2019 was 10. Fifty percent of those people are housed, if you hold those numbers to be true. And I know that some people would say, well, there's more homeless. Well, I think then LASSA needs to revise the way it does its homeless count and let's have an accurate reflection of what homelessness is in communities so the communities get actual funding. This is a local control issue. Before I leave that point about me, I grew up in a home where my sister was an addict, using meth, watching my parents fight, watching her leave, watching her sleep in her car. My wife's a forensic psychologist, it's her brother, that is struggling with addiction, spent a long time in prison, come back out. In the last two years, I found my brother-in-law, we've received the phone calls at home, my wife crying when my brother-in-law has been found without a pulse, face down in public parks out in the community, hearing that firefighters and police officers use Narcan to resuscitate him, only to take him to a hospital that ultimately leaves him for nothing, just to go back out onto the street for these so-called services that are being peddled. So I've been passionate about addressing homelessness here in our community. It's personal for me. I've also been a victim of crime and I'm an advocate for victims' rights. I'm an advocate for mental health. I'm an advocate for ending substance abuse. So it was a little hurtful to me to see the outlashing from folks that believed that I was anything contrary to championing this cause, but I do believe that meaningful impact to these, this issue is important. I've championed a homeless resource center to this council, actually the last council. I again will continue to champion to see that we address homelessness through the remainder of my term here in the community. I'm honored to serve this community. I think that as Councilman Weber discussed, that this is a very compassionate community that's very giving. We have a roving shelter, we participate in regularly. Each year, the city hosts, well, Hoi Nam Mary hosts this roving shelter program and the city manager and staff actually posted about our homelessness programs that we offer here in the city. And you can see that on the city's social media page on Facebook. I also pushed it out on Twitter. As it relates to the events that occurred on Saturday, I would thank Mr. Gary Underley, Mrs. Esmeralda Salazar, and Mr. Sean Kazaris for all your efforts to be able to increase awareness in the community, organize that event, and let people raise awareness to an issue that I think is very important. At the end of the day, when the mayor announced that the CEO of G6 Hospitality and Motel Six was going to notify the county of his intention to withdraw from San Dimas, it was a good day, I think, for our community. To those people that have said that we've turned our back on people, I disagree and I think that if we were in a life raft, if we were out in the middle of the ocean and you had two people in a life raft and one person's had holes in it and was taking on water and barely floating and the other one was staying above water and actually wasn't taking on water because it's doing what it's supposed to do, I'd stay on the one that's not taking on water. And that's San Dimas. We've addressed our problem, we have the resources and I, from what I understand from the city manager earlier, we are in a place to be able to work, to give people who want housing in our city, housing through our voucher program. And I think it's very important that people understand that you can't have a skewed view of homelessness. I think it's very important that people understand, in my experience as a law enforcement officer, that there are many people who have absolutely no desire to have housing. They have no desire to conform. And for a very long time, when I worked in patrol, I had fed a gentleman that was homeless who lived underneath the 91 freeway. And this gentleman was a school teacher at a local high school. At some point, his wife died. And the bottom line is, as I got to know him for the years that I worked in patrol in that city, and I'd bring him food, he just shared the story that when his wife died, living in the house was all too much for him and ultimately, he said he just didn't want to conform anymore. And so it was just easier for him to live underneath the freeway. And what's most interesting is about this particular gentleman is he actually had a job. He would walk to his job every day. He had a library card and, you know, just chose to be homeless. I'm not saying everybody chooses to be homeless, but I do think it's important that we understand that we have to have a very realistic view of homelessness and we really need to understand the problem. I also would add, lastly, that I want to thank G6 Hospitality and the Motel Six. For a long time, they've been a partner with our homeless program. They currently provide, as some of our other hotels provide, housing for people who can't afford housing right now. And essentially, it's used as affordable housing for people who are staying there for long-term stays, who maybe can't afford a home right now. And it's better than them living in a car. So for the reasons of displacing people who are already perhaps impacted through different economic issues that were staying at our Motel Six, the five people from our own homeless program, the people who are participating in other programs who benefit from vouchers, receiving mental health services, all of these reasons are why I'm grateful that we're able to continue to protect the people who are most vulnerable in San Dimas and I'm grateful for the fact that Project Room Key, the County of Los Angeles, and the G6 Hospitality Corporation and Motel Six saw that and chose to withdraw from San Dimas. So with that, I thank you, everyone, for all of your comments and feedback throughout this process and I do hope, and you have my promise, that we will continue to advocate for the homeless in this community. I had the opportunity to speak with folks that had emailed, some of them which were mentioned and are in the record, that we are and do take homelessness seriously and you have my word to continue to advocate for that. Thank you.
Dennis?
Well, if you had a more upbeat, then thank you very much for your presentation. It's very good. As we heard earlier, May is Over American Recognition Month and I wanted to congratulate Marjorie Greene and Alta Skinner, as the mayor did before. Marjorie Greene has been active in the Chamber of Commerce, the Festival of Arts, the Historical Society, and Alta Skinner is active in anything that has to do with the school system and they're both well-deserved this honor. We talked about the federal government maybe helping out small cities and if you look at the consent calendar, the second to the last item is a letter from the San Gabriel Valley Cog to all our representatives asking them for the support for this bill that would give financial aid to cities under $500,000. And the cog is lobbying hard on this to try to get all our representatives to co-sponsor the bill. And that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. This morning, I received a phone call where somebody, where this individual absolutely complimented the city about the coyote management plan. That was the first time I had heard the word coyote in quite a long time, although I know the coyotes aren't gone anywhere. It appears that the folks in San Dimas are reporting it and were handling those calls and things like that. But with that all being said, maybe sometime in the next couple of meetings or so, if you could give us an update on the coyote management plan. As everyone knows or doesn't know, I'm the representative to the San Gabriel Valley Vector Control, which is fashionably known as mosquitoes. Just an update, you know, we had a pretty rainy season this, you know, last month, month and a half. This individual who called, they happened to say that he happened to go out in his backyard, not realizing, even thinking about it, and all of a sudden found that all his vases that were empty and stuff was full of water and, you know, which obviously we know is a breeding home for mosquitoes. So maybe everyone could start thinking about that now that it's starting to get hot and we can keep that. I had a bunch of notes, but as usual, Ryan's covered most of them, so, but once again, I do want to thank G6, Motel Six. They saw that the citizens were concerned, they saw that there was probably a lack of information being filtered down and they contacted us and we really appreciate that and they, it's one of the things that helped generate us past this issue, but as Ryan said, we will take care of our homeless here in San Dimas and we'll take care of, as we've proven, and we do have a homeless plan and anybody can go to the website and see what it is and it's pretty comprehensive. With that all being said, tonight, when I adjourn this meeting, we'll be going into closed session, anticipate a litigation, significant exposure to litigations pursuant to Government's Code Section 54956.9, Deals and David.2. One case, letter from Schinkman Hughes regarding California Voting Rights Act. The second closed session is a conference with legal counsel, anticipate a litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9, Deals and David.4. One case. Public employee, the third case is a public employee discipline, dismissal or release. The fourth will be public employee performance evaluation, title, city manager. Okay?
And mayor, just for the benefit of the public, we are not planning to discuss item number two in closed session tonight, so it'll just be one, three, and four.
Thank you. Have a motion to adjourn?
Move.
About five minutes. About five minutes.
John, you here?
Yes, I am.
It shows back in session at...
It doesn't show...
Okay. It shows back in session at 12:20 on the 13th. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council tonight met in closed session to discuss some of the items on the closed session agenda. The council discussed item number one on the agenda, which was significant exposure to litigation. Council had a discussion with staff about that matter, but no reportable action was taken. The council did not discuss item number two on the agenda. The council did not discuss item number four on the agenda. Item number three on the agenda, public employee discipline dismissal release. The council did discuss that item and gave direction that the city manager is to be placed on administrative leave, paid administrative leave, effective immediately. Based on that, Mr. Mayor, because that action arose after the posting of the agenda for tonight's meeting, we need to have an additional closed session item for appointment of an acting city manager. So in order to do that, the council could make a motion, and it requires a four-fifths vote, to add a closed session agenda item to the meeting, to the agenda tonight, for public employee appointment of the position of city man, of acting city manager. So that motion would be appropriate at this time.
So moved.
Second.
And we don't have a city clerk at the moment, so I suppose I could take the roll call vote. Councilmember Bertone?
Yes.
Councilmember Weber?
Yes.
Councilmember Ebner?
Yes, sorry, I'm you.
Mayor Protem Vienna?
Yes.
And Mayor Bedar?
Yes.
Okay, so the public employee appointment city manager, sorry, acting city manager item has been added to the agenda. The council will now reconvene into closed session.
Two minutes.
vote, to add a closed session agenda item to the meeting, to the agenda tonight, for public employee appointments of the position of city man, of acting city manager. So that motion would be appropriate this time.
So moved. Second.
And we don't have a city clerk at the moment, so I suppose I could take the roll call vote. Councilmember Bertone?
Yes.
Councilmember Weber?
Yes.
Councilmember Ebner?
Yes, sorry, I'm you.
Mayor Protem Vienna?
Yes.
And Mayor Bedar?
Yes.
Okay, so the public employee appointment city manager, sorry, acting city manager item has been added to the agenda. The council will now reconvene into closed session.
Two minutes.
12. We can see this sending the City Council meeting. It's 12:45, 12:45 on the 13th. City Attorney has a, an announcement?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The City Council just met in closed session on the closed session item that was added to the agenda, public employee appointments, acting city manager. The City Council decided by a unanimous five-zero vote to appoint Brad McKinney as the acting city manager, effective immediately. That's the report out, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
That'll, that'll conclude tonight's action. Show us adjourned.